All right, okay, this microphone sounds like it's working. Good evening, this is the August fourteenth Town Official Planning Board meeting, and I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
..................................................................
All right, just a couple of announcements, actually more than a couple. So we have all seven voting members expected to be here. Okay, so Jody is coming, but she's not here yet. So we have well over a quorum. And we also have two alternate members should we need them to be appointed tonight. But right now, we're okay. Oh, so the Planning Board's engineer, Dennis Lynch, is not able to attend tonight's meeting. So sitting in for Dennis is Denise, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's pronounced Hanis.
Hanis, okay. Denise Hanis will be helping us out tonight. And then also, we have Anisha Samuels, who is one of MJ's planners, and she'll be assisting the board with the Willow Lake application. So welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
Also, the Fishkill Commerce Center, which was going to be rescheduled for tonight from last month, has requested another postponement, so now they're scheduled to be on September eleventh. And then finally, at the end of tonight's meeting, we will have a closed session in which the board will seek the advice of the Planning Board Attorney. So let's start right off, we have a request for extension of approval. This will be for the Johnson Trails five lot subdivision, or to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on July twenty-three, 2025. This is a request for a ninety-day extension of the resolution of conditional final approval that was adopted by the board on February thirteen, 2025, and shall expire on August thirteen, 2025. Welcome, Mike, how are you?
How are you? How are you?
Good.
So we are actually on the exact date of the six-month approval period. We are seeking a ninety-day extension. Largely, we're working out some of the details on the legal aspect of the road dedication and so forth, and just working out some details on the drainage, we're pretty much through that. But it's gonna take another ninety days for us to kind of run through that good stuff. So we're here at the bequest of the applicant to seek another ninety days.
All right, any questions from board members on that? Dominic, do you see any legal issues with that?
No, sir. And ninety days would take you out to Wednesday, November twelve. I would suggest that you consider extending that to the fourteenth, I believe.
Microphone closer, please.
Sure. I would suggest that you consider an extension to be Thursday, November thirteenth.
So extend it to Thursday, November thirteenth?
That's right. That way, they wouldn't have to come back in October, you know, while they still have a significant amount of time left.
What was the date, the thirteenth or fourteenth?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. All right, does that sound okay with the board?
Yes.
All right, so would somebody like to move that we approve a ninety-day extension of the resolution of conditional final subdivision approval for the Johnson Trails five lot subdivision, and that would go to November thirteenth, 2025?
Second.
Felix moves it, Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So since we only have six voting members right now, Jody just came in, but you're too late to vote on this one, but welcome, Jody.
What's it to me, what?
Well, to vote on this particular matter that we're not gonna talk about anymore. So that passes six to zero. So thanks for coming in, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just have a quick question.
Sure.
Am I permitted to discuss the form with Town Board Attorney at this point? I'm talking about the undertaking and the performance agreement. I amended the letter of credit format given to us by the bank. I followed your code regulations, but I just wanted to discuss the details with the town attorney, I believe the town attorney approved this law.
You know, I mean, he represents the town, and represents the Town Board in particular, not this board, you know, there's no restriction on him being able to speak to Mr. Roberts, correct?
Should we authorize that, or, I mean, since we don't have that?
I don't think you need to authorize it because he's not your attorney.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to do anything that would offend anybody.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, welcome, Jody. So now we have seven voting members, seven voting members present. So the next one is a request for extension to file an endorsed final subdivision plat. This is for two-twenty-eight Osborne Hill Road and nine Bergoff Drive for a lot line realignment. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on July eighteen, 2025, which is a request for a ninety-day extension to file the endorsed final subdivision plat and deeds with the Dutchess County Office of the Clerk. And the Planning Board Chair endorsed the mylar of the final subdivision plat on May nineteenth, 2025. So is the applicant present?
I don't even see the representative present at the attorney.
All right. If not, I don't know, should we wait until they come? I mean, this is a fairly simple thing, although we usually like the applicant to be present, but...
There may have been a misunderstanding where they thought that perhaps a letter was sufficient, since it's just an extension, I would encourage the board to grant the extension rather than allow the application to expire, just because they're not present.
Okay, and this, these lot line realignments are meant to be expedited matters, which sometimes get a little bogged down because of either whatever.
Sometimes there's, you know, issues with the county clerk, you know, regarding legibility of matters or other items that come up.
So is the board okay with acting on this without the applicant being present?
This came into us as a very simple realignment. We said, "Good, let's get it done." And now it's gone almost a year? How long has it been?
Well, life happens.
There was a situation with the attorney not being allowed till later, so that's what I'm hoping this right now.
So see turn, okay.
Well, it's not the attorney's fault, he wasn't hired for later in the process.
It's easy to blame the attorney, you know.
Yeah. It's not his fault. Sorry.
And usually, if we do that, the attorney is quite capable of defending himself.
Pretty much.
It's what we get paid for.
All right, let's not stretch this out longer than we need to. So with all that, would somebody like to make a motion to approve a ninety-day extension? Oh, so on this one, I'll just mention, so the sixty-two day period for filing actually expired on July twentieth, 2025. And my understanding is from reading the code provisions, that acting on this, the board acting on this after the expiration date, does not preclude us from passing a further extension.
It does not.
Good, okay. So what I'm suggesting is, and this is changing the time a little bit, since we're going from today, which is August fourteenth, I'm suggesting that the ninety days would go a little bit longer till August fourteenth. I'm sorry, till November, sorry, till November twelfth is what I meant to say.
Number thirteen.
Like we did with the previous one.
Well, this is still giving them, let's see, I'm not sure what day November twelfth is.
It would be the Wednesday before the meeting in November.
Well, it's up to the board what you would like to do. You wanna make it November thirteenth?
Sure.
All right. So hopefully neither of these two extensions will need to come back, but if they do, we'll be here. So is there a motion to approve a ninety-day plus extension to file the signed subdivision plat and deeds with the Dutchess County Clerk's office for the two-twenty-eight Osborne Hill Road and nine Bergoff Drive lot line realignment, which would expire on November thirteenth, 2025?
Second.
Second, Anthony moved it.
Correct.
And Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. All right. Now we have a new submittal. It has a rather long introduction, which I think I will only try to highlight some of which, because we have the applicant here to tell us all about the new projects that they are proposing. So this is the Willow Lake Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. The applicant seeks site development plan approval and special permit approval for the adopted reuse of several existing structures and amenities on this property, and for the construction of new improvements, including, and I won't mention all of them, overnight motel accommodations, restaurant with outdoor seating, a large event space for group dining and special occasions, and other things that we will hear about shortly. I'm not gonna read all the information about the tax parcels, but needless to say, this proposal is on several different tax parcels, all of which are along Van Wick Lake Road. And tonight's introduction to the proposal involves referring the application to the town engineer, town planner, town planning board attorney, town traffic consultants, Dutchess County planning, and several New York state agencies, and the Rambault Fire District. The board will allow informal comments after the board has discussed the proposal. So with that, the applicant, from my understanding, has submitted the required application fee and escrow deposit, so I'll ask the applicant team to come on and tell us all about it.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, members of the public. My name is Alex Friedman, I am a principal of Willow Lake and the Willow Lake Project. I am joined this evening by my partners, Josh Wood, Brian Tormay, as well as Zachary Camm of Dynamic Engineering, Pat Lesbrough of Brick City Reconstruction, and Jennifer Van Tile of Cuddy Fader. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight, to present the Willow Lake Project to the Planning Board, and to begin the public review process. Our one-hundred-and-five-plus acre site is more than land and buildings. It is a place with a remarkable and layered history, dating back to the days of Henry Van Wyk. The estate itself has long been a part of the fabric of the town of Fishkill. In eighteen ninety-one, Henry himself envisioned and created the man-made lake that still glistens the property today. A lake that has brought beauty, outdoor recreation, and serenity to generations. Henry also served, as you may know, as the first mayor of the town of Fishkill. Over the decades, Willow Lake has been a place of refuge and solace in a mountain setting to enjoy the great outdoors. Families have gathered here, friends have reunited here, and important moments have been celebrated on its shores. Through the long and dedicated stewardship of the Bernie family, the property has continued into the present to provide a beautiful natural setting for enjoyment and rooted tradition of special occasions. Weddings, gatherings, corporate retreats, community events, and quiet family escapes. Our vision for Willow Lake is rooted in that heritage. We seek not to overwrite the past, but to honor it, to preserve it, and to extend it forward. The land's natural beauty will remain its centerpiece, and you'll see that in our plans. The historic mansion will continue to be preserved and maintained as an integral element of the site. The lake, the trees, the fields, all remain integral to the experience that we are creating. At a high level, which you'll see momentarily, our plans include the creation of eighty guest cabins, extensive hiking trails, a rock climbing wall, a restaurant, an event hall, swimming pool, and cascading terraces overlooking the lake. Central to our concept is more than seventy acres of mountain space for outdoor recreation. The design integrates all the new elements into already disturbed areas of the property, ensuring minimal environmental impact. At the same time, we aim to give Willow Lake a new chapter, one that opens its gates to more people while safeguarding what makes it truly special. It will be a place where visitors and future generations can come together for celebrations, for gatherings, and for the invigorating enjoyment of being in nature. We believe Willow Lake has always been and should always remain an asset to the town of Fishkill in this region. This project represents a significant investment in the legacy and an opportunity to blend thoughtful management and preservation of this beautiful mountain setting with economic and community benefit. On behalf of our entire team, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. We look forward to closely working with the Planning Board, our neighbors, and the town to ensure that Willow Lake continues to be a place of pride for Fishkill, just as it's been for well over a century. I'll now ask Zachary Camm of Dynamic Engineering to share some of the details about our proposed site plan. I thank you very much for your consideration and your time.
Good evening all, Chairman Cantor, members of the Planning Board, it's great to see you all again. For the record, Zachary Camm from Dynamic Engineering. I wanted to start off by just walking you through the site a bit and kind of introduce you to all the different elements that Alex just mentioned. The property itself is located on Willow Lake Drive, which is an existing loop road off of Van Wick Lake Road. There are two existing egress points right here and right here that will be maintained as part of the application. The project site itself is about a hundred and five acres. Of the hundred and five acres, we're touching about twenty-five only. As guests enter Willow Lake, they first will come onto this building, which is the Welcome Center. This is where guests will have their cars valeted, their bags dropped off and checked in, and then they will officially be on the property. After they check in, guests will only be traversing through some of these gravel pathways that you see, either by walking or by electric golf carts. Moving a bit to the north, let me zoom in a little for you. So at the northeast here, we get to the proposed Fitness and Activity Center. There are two different colors you see, so this lighter orange hatch is actually an existing stone dwelling, and then this light orange hatch is an existing detached garage. The darker hatches you see are proposed additions to those existing structures. The Activity and Fitness Center will serve as a trailhead as well for all of the hiking trails that we discussed, as well as a centralized hub for off-site excursions, where guests can enjoy some of the surrounding offerings that Fishkill has. Moving south, there are two proposed tennis courts. There is a lower tennis court, and then a higher tennis court, which follows the existing grade with a staircase connecting the two. As we move further south throughout the rear of the site, we first get upon the restaurant. The restaurant's about fourteen thousand square feet, and contains the pools and terrace waterfall features that Alex had mentioned, as well as tiered cabanas that will offer guests views of the lake, the existing estate, as well as the mountainside. Continuing further south, the restaurant has an integrated orchard that will have vertical cluster plantings of different fruits, apples, pears, outdoor picnic tables, and just a real lovely outdoor setting for guests to enjoy beautiful nature. And that will tie into this flex building, which incorporates a green roof. Wanted to take a minute to kind of talk about this building specifically, as it really hits home the intentional and thoughtfulness of putting the proposed development into the existing nature. So this building is tucked into the hillside, and if you're coming to it from the rear, the green roof will act as an extension of just a courtyard, and you wouldn't even realize you're on top of a building. Continuing further south through the rear spine road here, you'll notice a lot of screening kind of on this edge. This road really separates some of the back-of-house operations from the front-of-house guest As we move towards the southeast corner of the development, we get to the event space, the outdoor garden, and the spa building. The dining and event hall has a drop-off area up here. If there are guests staying at nearby hotels and get shuttle dropped off, this would be a central drop-off location where they would enter the event hall at the top level, before you would drive down a ramp in the rear for more of the back-of-house operations. So this lower level in the back is where delivery would happen, garbage pickup, employees can actually park underneath the building itself, and then there's a turnaround loop for easy access to avoid any delivery vehicles, trucks, and things of that nature from having to go further into the property. Moving further south is the spa building. You'll notice a little blue line here kind of meandering its way through. That is an existing stream. The spa building was designed to actually cannon lever over the stream, so there are actually gonna be treatment rooms located in this general area with glass floors, you can actually see the water running beneath you while you're enjoying the spa. There will also be a new culvert installed to allow for the vehicular traffic to cross that stream. As we move further down into the plan, we get towards the guest cabin area. One important thing I wanted to note is you'll see a change in color here from a dark gray to more of a light gray. This is where our typical asphalt pavement ends, and a new gravel drive begins. This gravel drive and loop road you see here was incorporated into the design after meeting on site with fire officials to make sure we're maintaining proper emergency access. But the only other vehicles that will be on that road will be the electric golf carts themselves. Moving into the guest cabin area, as Alex mentioned, there are eighty total units. There are thirty-two semi-attached, which are these clusters of two right here, as well as sixteen fully detached units, which is this larger individual cabin here. Without going into too much detail at the first meeting and boring you with all the engineering, just to kind of give you a high-level oversight, the site does slope somewhat significantly from the southeast, sorry, the southwest, southeast to the northwest, if I can move over, towards Willow Lake as well as Van Wick Lake Drive. We are proposing retaining walls throughout most of the site to help with some of that gray change. We're also incorporating seven stormwater management facilities, all of which are fully designed to satisfy all local, as well as New York State DEC regulations. On the plan, you'll notice these little clustered circles here, those are delineated wetlands. The buffer kind of outline you see around them is the New York State DEC hundred-foot regulated buffer. As you'll notice with that buffer, our design does not encroach into that whatsoever, and we are fully avoiding that buffer on purpose. In terms of the onsite utilities, we're gonna have a sanitary pump station located right here, which will pump the sanitary from the cabins up to the eastern corridor, where a gravity line will come down. And then we are also proposing a water and sewer main extension that will ultimately tie in all the way down Van Wick Lake out across Route ninety. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, but first I'll turn it over to Patrick Lesbrough, our principal architect.
Just the word, it's not ninety, it's nine.
What?
You said Route ninety? It's not ninety, it's nine.
Route nine, I'm sorry, nine, yeah.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Lesbrough, the principal architect of the project. I'm gonna walk us through the architectural visualizations for the project. Most of the project has been thoughtfully designed to take into account the open spaces as our engineer prescribed. We tried to take the building and use the existing topography and landscape to embellish the buildings while allowing the native landscaping to work with our project. So here's a site overview of the project. As you can see, the center of the project and everything really faces into the center of Willow Lake. Our parking is on Van Wyk Road. Our check-in building is located here, where we detach ourselves from our vehicles, and then everything else is vehicular golf cart traffic, so there wouldn't be any guests driving their own cars on the site, it would all be golf cart traffic. Here you can see the cascading waterfalls, which is built out of the existing bluff, and that's where the restaurant sits overlooking Willow Lake. Oh. Usually, there's just a full screen bug, but that's right. Okay, so that's a better view of it. So now you can see with the aerial, the restaurant overlooking the waterfall with the cascading exterior cabana spaces. Located back here, we have our event space and our spa space like here. You can see the little stream, and then our cabins circulate around in the existing open space. Here you can see another aerial view. It starts to turn, so you can see how the tiered waterfall works. Again, this is an existing bluff where we built out of, so the cabanas will sit out and tier down towards the waterfall, towards the lake. And here you can see a right view showing the existing estate in the bottom right corner, and then the cabins cascading back into the mountain. This is an important view, this is the check-in building, so this is the first moment where the guests or any visitor to the site would experience the lake. The building itself frames itself around the lake to allow for this iconic moment where you first get to glimpse of what the lake looks like, and that's the first moment, and that's the first time you leave your car and become into the destination that is Willow Lake. Here we're showing a picture of the Activity Center. The Activity Center serves as a changing area for guests coming to hike the trails. It serves as a gathering point before any guests leaving to go on wine tastings or other excursions from our site to any of the surrounding neighborhoods. This is the place where all that occurs. The existing building is still left, and then we've proposed a modern addition, which would be the gym that overlooks Willow Lake from the gym portion of the project. We also have some security, first aid within this building, as well as employee lockers. This is the building that Zach was prescribing, which is built out of the landscape. This is the flex space, it can be used for small gatherings, small corporate events, wine tastings, pottery classes, it can be really used for anything. And this actually faces onto the pond, an existing pond and existing bridge, so it's a really beautiful moment, and we allow it to build itself out of the landscape, and then the green roof allows it from any other view that this building is hidden from sight. Here's a picture of our cabins. There's two types of cabins, we have suites, and we have singles. The singles are shown as two cabins stuck together, and then you can see on the bottom right corner, that would be the suite model. So those are larger in size, and then those are single unit. This is a rendition of what the interiors would be. Again, the entire intention of the architecture is to captivate the lake and the natural surroundings, so we've used the extenuation of the structure to really cascade the elements and grab what we're looking for within the project. This is a view of the restaurant, so as you can see, the restaurant comes out of the landscape with berms that step down towards the water. The building itself fans itself out to look over the lake, again, just to really captivate and grab that view. And then the staircases and golf cart trails wrap around the building, but everything is really screened from view in back-of-house, you wouldn't see that if you're a guest on the property or a visitor coming to the site. This would be the view from the pools. So as you can see, when you're looking from the pools, we can see the cabins to the left, we see the historic estate, and everything really just becomes one at this moment, and this is the top of the restaurant overlooking everything. This is the Event Center. So the Event Center is comprised of a series of gable roofs that extenuate and look for the formation of the mountains. We've also added a monumental staircase, which we saw as a moment where we could have a large gathering, take a picture, where the Beacon Mountain becomes your backdrop of those pictures. So we saw this as really an interesting moment. To the right, you can see the garden space, which is off of the Conference Center, which is located on the lower level of the project. This is a view from the left, where again, you can see how this, the building takes its shape out of the mountain. We see the landscaping coming up, and it's all native landscaping, we've done extensive landscaping plan, which has been also submitted as part of our application. This is a preliminary rendering of what we envisioned something might look like for the interior. Just again, the entire vision is that we are capturing a lake with the architecture. Just again, the entire vision is that we are capturing a lake with the architecture, and the architecture frames the view. This is a sample picture of what the spa would look like. As you can see, an early rendition, the creek coming below. There's actually a bathhouse at the lower level. And this building is actually built as an extension of the existing footprint. There's an existing Airbnb unit, which is currently at this site. And then we'd have a two-tiered indoor space, and then we'd have the bathhouse, which would open actually onto the lake, onto the stream, I'm sorry. And then you would have this, the treatment rooms up top looking down onto the creek. That is everything regarding the architecture. I don't know, does anyone have any questions regarding the architecture of the project?
Lot of stairs.
There are a lot of stairs. It's a very, very mountainous terrain. So we try to activate that.
Good evening. I just want to comment on the permits that are going to be required, because I think it's important that everyone understand that this proposal requires a special permit that would be issued by this board. And that means that the special permit standards with which the board is familiar apply. And there are seven of them that call particular attention to the manner in which the project fits the neighborhood and is compatible with it. I won't repeat all of the standards now, but I think as you review our initial submission and as we go through the review of the project, it's important to realize that the review that this project will receive is not just site plan review, although that's an important part of it. But we look forward to working with the board and responding to any concerns that you or neighbors have. I think the other important point to recognize, which will come more to light as we get into further detail, is to show you just exactly how the affecting of only twenty-five acres within this hundred-and-five acre site really is very sensitive to the neighboring properties and to this property as well. So we look forward to going into those issues with more detail, but of course are happy to answer any immediate questions that the board has.
All right. Well, who would like to start with questions or comments from the board?
Have there been any discussions with the neighboring properties up to this point?
There have. We've had conversations with several of the neighbors to date.
And just individual meetings where they're...
Individual, yeah, individual. We've reached out as just being good neighbors to have spoken to a bunch of them.
And input that they've received have been worked into this plan? What were the nature of the, can you speak to some of the nature of the concerns?
Yeah, I mean, so far, to be very candid, we haven't received too much in terms of concern. I think the standard of potential traffic and noise is probably the ones. But we've worked those into our plan, and we've really been careful and thoughtful about how we've considered all of that.
So my understanding is the, I guess you would say, former owner of the property, the most recent owner, is still involved in your group and still very involved in the neighborhood. So that sounds like it might be a good link to, you know, get continuing good communication back and forth with the neighborhood.
Yeah, the Bernies are a remarkable family. We speak with them regularly, and they're just phenomenal people.
So, well, you know, we probably won't have too many questions tonight, and this hasn't been referred to our consultants yet, so we'll really start getting into more detailed questions and review at our next meeting.
As we move through the process, obviously, there will be many questions, I'm sure. I think it would be great, over the course of the next few weeks, if members of the planning board would come see the site, if that is a possibility. The expanse of it, the size of it, the scale of it, is really something you need to see onsite to really understand how we've positioned it and how we've designed this project. So we open that up, and of course, we'd really appreciate that if possible.
Mike, you told us that you could have bring water and sewer across Route 9, or is some of it on the same side? Because we do have the other projects.
That is correct. So the current proposal that we're looking at is going across into the mall shopping center with both water and sewer to tie into the existing infrastructure.
Have you folks thought about treating the lake? In the sense that the lake today represents maybe not quite the vision that you articulate here with blue water and, you know, it's kind of grab. And I mean, my understanding, it looks a little bit more like a pond than a lake. My understanding, the difference is there's an outflow from the lake somewhere, and so that outflow has some downstream impacts. So I'm just thinking, if you need to treat the lake to get it clean, I don't know what the downstream impact might be.
We've had the water tested, and the water is clean. There's no presence of any bacteria or any algae. I will tell you that from the last year of us spending considerable amount of time there, that water is crystal clear. Particularly after rain, after snow melt, the water is quite spectacular. The color of it is obviously a reflection of its base. It's twelve feet deep at the bottom in the middle of the lake. My kids swim in it. We have guests swim in it all the time. Ross, behind me, swims in it daily as his routine. A year later, he's still in great health. So the water, the water itself is clean. It would be a significant concern for us if it wasn't. We plan on testing it regularly for our guests. But it is a very healthy lake. Lot of fish, lot of turtles. It's a very healthy ecologically sound lake.
Quick, I heard you say something before, but I didn't hear clearly. Like, how are you getting people through the cabins? You said through, just walking, or?
Walking and electric golf cart.
Golf carts, that's what I heard.
Yeah, the goal is to not have any vehicular or gas-powered vehicle traffic south of where the check-in area is.
And it's early, yeah, but I just, the first thing I looked is just making sure that the fire department has access to get to something if you have an emergency there.
We did take the preemptive approach of speaking with the fire department and having them come onsite, and did adjust some of our plans based on their preliminary comments. Thank you very much.
So, well, don't go anywhere yet. I think we'll go to, well, first I wanted to check with Dominic Cordisco, our attorney, to see if you have any early questions about the proposal, just from what you've heard so far. I know it hasn't been referred yet, but...
Understood. And as Jennifer had mentioned, you know, it's going to be both the site plan and special permit. And so the board will have to consider, you know, the location of this project as it relates to the surrounding area as an overarching concern. But that, I'm sure, will be played out as the board continues its review or undertakes its review. The initial steps, I'm sure, for the board to consider would be to circulate for lead agency, and you can potentially do that, you know, at either the next meeting, or if there is deficiencies in the EAF, then, you know, those could be corrected and you could start that process. Because I'm sure everyone would want to get involvement from, and comments from other agencies early in the process.
And you can see from the materials submitted, there is already a traffic impact study that's been submitted, a species habitat and biodiversity survey report, and a Phase 1A archaeological sensitivity assessment, and then a full environmental assessment form, Part 1, that we'll certainly need to go through at the next meeting. But meanwhile, Anisha, do you have any early comments, although it hasn't been referred yet? I know that Anisha and I and Dennis Lynch attended a pre-application meeting, what, about a little over a month ago, probably. And also, I was able to visit the site. The applicants were kind enough to invite myself and the town supervisor and also our building inspector to the site just before the pre-application meeting. So I'd certainly echo the applicant's suggestion that board members try to visit the site, and we can make arrangements to do that. Whether it will be before the September meeting or not, you know, depends on the scheduling and coordination, but we can talk about that. But Anisha, if you have any very early comments?
My early comments would be to ensure compliance with the noise ordinance and also potentially providing some visual impact analysis of some sort, ensuring that there's no negative impacts visually to the neighbors. Also, tree replanting. I know you'll be disturbing some areas, so just having a tree planting plan of some sort. Potentially, consider also some civic contributions. I don't know if you're going to have some trails that are going to be open to the public or some that are going to be reserved for only participants, but just have some kind of civic contribution outline of what you're planning to do there. Also, I'm aware that you're going to be doing some steep slope development. You might want to have a plan for that. I think you're going to be having your restaurant or some feature there. Just having a steep slope development plan of some sort for the town to review. And that's my preliminary concern through areas that I would want to look into, but I might have more moving forward.
Thank you.
And Denise, do you have any observations at this point?
No, not at this point. I know Dennis has, as you mentioned, attended the preliminary site walkthrough, and he did not have any comments. I think a technical review requires to have a look at the plans, the parking, making sure that things from a technical standpoint are addressed.
Yeah, quick, without getting into details on the traffic analysis, but does that also have an analysis of the parking situation within that?
Yes, it does, as well as the onsite circulation.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I have a suggestion, too. Change one of your tennis courts to paddle ball.
I think, I think that can be accommodated.
So, any other questions from the board, or we see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to talk about this?
Nothing right now.
All right. All right, well, let me just check to see if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments regarding this proposal. So I see several hands coming up. So we'll invite you up. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have four minutes to speak, and we'll give you a warning when one minute is left. So, yes, sir, come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Bakone, and I live at 30 Cathy Court, and my property's backyard touches Van Wick Lake Road directly across from the proposed plan. My well is in my backyard, and my electric service comes from Van Wick Lake Road. I've been maintaining the grassy access to Van Wick Lake Road for the last thirty years for walking and biking, which I fear will be compromised with the new proposed eastern parking lot and roadway being directly in front of this access area. I'm concerned with the elevation. I don't know if you could put the site map back up, but I'm concerned with the elevation being higher than my property and the resulting runoff of water that will directly impact my property. We already have water issues coming off the mountain, coming across Van Wick Lake Road. We've had Dean Schofield and Carmine there. They've been looking at it. They tried to address it, but we still have water coming down between our houses already. So this elevation, the water runoff, is going to directly impact my property as well as the vehicle. And the parking lot is going to be shining. Car lights are going to be hitting my kitchen window, my house. Six months of the year, there's no vegetation, so you can't plant trees for six months of the year and hide the traffic lights. Nobody from the applicant has come talk to us at our house, so I'm not sure who they've talked to, but they haven't talked to us. The resulting land clearing to put in this parking lot right in my backyard is going to increase the noise levels. And ever since, the Bernies had a couple of events and weddings, and they tended to be over by the mansion, and the noise was quite a distance from the house. But with it being directly behind my house now, there's already been a couple of parties where the music's been thudding and pumping, and I can hear it over top of the air conditioners in my house that are running nonstop. So while I understand and respect that they're trying to preserve the property, they're definitely impacting the neighbors. And there's myself, next-door neighbor, there's three people on the cul-de-sac of Cathy Court that will be directly impacted with this parking lot, car lights, adverse water problems from runoff on the mountain. So, I mean, it's a beautiful design. If there's a hundred acres, if you can move the parking lot and that roadway to someplace else, and if it can't, then I'd implore the board to not approve this special use. And impacting the neighborhood is not in our 40 design. Sorry, but that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marie Sprock. My husband and Justin, my husband Justin and I have lived at 164 Van Wick Lake Road for over twenty-five years with our two children. Our property is adjacent to the proposed project, and aside from meeting the team, the project team, when the Bernies introduced us, we have not been contacted until a text from Alex tonight to my husband. Back in 1999, we bought a difficult six-acre property. We built our home on it intentionally because we love the peace, privacy, and rural character of that road. We never imagined decades later, we'd be facing a commercial mega resort with hundreds of visitors. I didn't make it through the thousand fifty-four pages of the agenda packet. Hopefully, you guys did. But I did get through quite a bit. It's a beautiful presentation. Attractive buildings, promises of economic gain, and minimal impact. But I want to talk about real impact, what it actually feels like to live next door. On the evening of June 18th, I came home from work about 6:00 PM. As I rounded the bend to the Stone House, that's what we've always called it, I saw traffic cones in the road and a field full of parked cars on the Willow Lake property. From inside my home, windows closed, air conditioning on, I could clearly hear the music and the event going on. At 8:30, I texted my neighbors, the Bakones, to ask what's going on. It turns out they were out of town. Otherwise, as Mike indicated, he probably would have called us first. It did wrap up by 10 o'clock, but this was a midweek event before the cabins, the restaurant, the spa, the gym, and the hundreds of guests. We are very concerned, not just about the noise, but about the blasting, well water, runoff, traffic, and the long-term effects of paving over the green spaces. We are even more concerned, knowing that there's another massive project in Continental Commons approved at the end of the road. What's being proposed here isn't just a business. It's a total change to the character of our neighborhood and our town. The design project also raises questions. They didn't speak about where they're going to get these customers from, but when the posh adults run out, is this going to turn into a summer sleepaway camp like they have in Cold Spring? That might not be the intention today, but the door would be wide open. Once you rezone this, you can't take it back. And frankly, Fish Gill is sometimes used as an example in nearby towns. Let's not become another Fish Gill. Do we want more of that? You might not, you might not think that the homes on Van Wick Lake Road and the nearby cul-de-sacs form a community, but we do. We are not just houses on a map. This affects all of us. The previous owners, Peg and Richard Bernie, held weddings, film shoots, multiple events. We barely noticed. Maybe that's because Willow Lake was their home, too, not just a property. They were cognizant of their location, and they were always considerate of their neighbors. Please think beyond these renderings and revenue projections. Think about the people who live here, have made Fish Gill their home, and the long-term effect on Fish Gill in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, do you have your hand up before?
Michelle Bakone, 30 Cathy Court. If you do come and check the property out, we'd love for you to come to our house so we can show you our end of it. I don't know if that's the thing. We can show you what it's like to live in our house and what we would see when that parking lot is there. Literally right across the street. The parking lot, the pickleball, I don't know if we talked about that, like the constant thumping. I'm sure we'll hear that, 'cause the pickleball courts, I think, are pretty close to where we live. So I just would appreciate that you take consideration into that. We're really concerned with that parking lot. It's not the initial parking lot, it's the one up the street east, I think. So, and that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else present tonight who would like to speak to this matter? Of course, there'll be opportunities as the review goes on. The board will be looking carefully at all of the environmental issues with the special permit review. We obviously will have to focus a lot on the neighborhood character and things like noise and all the other engineering aspects, stormwater, where the water goes, all those things. So, all right, well, we thank you for coming tonight and letting us hear your comments directly. It always helps to be able to do that very early in the process. This is the earliest. So hopefully, we can really plug into the neighborhood and hear a lot more from you. All right. After hearing those comments and just giving you one last chance, board members, do you have any other questions or comments before we consider accepting the application and referring it? Is there a motion, then, to accept the application for the proposed Willow Lake Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, and to refer this application to the town engineer, town planner, town planning board attorney, town traffic consultants, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Department of Transportation, the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, and the Rambout Fire District for Review and Comment? So moved. All right. Robbie moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
He looks seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Well, thank everyone for coming. This was a good early discussion, and we'll see you all next month.
Mr. Chair, if I may? I would just like to let everybody who's come to talk about this, please send us letters. It helps us also to see, so don't be afraid to write to us. Everything that you write to us, we get, and we can review and make sure that we have it on top of our list.
Letters and emails are fine, too. They can be directed to Debbie Colonna at the planning office. And Debbie is very good at getting all that out to us quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We are now at project reviews, and this first one is Fantozzi and Cabrera, 1611 Route 9D and 1613 Route 9D subdivision and lot line realignment, or to review a draft short environmental assessment form, Part II, a draft SEAF, Part III, a draft negative declaration, and a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval, and to consider adopting and authorizing the planning board chair to sign the aforementioned documents. So what I'd like to do first is ask Denise if you would summarize briefly for us the engineering memo from MJ dated August 8th.
Yes. Dennis's memo dated August 8th summarizes in terms of the secret review. The planning board would serve as lead agency, and if the would need to coordinate review for enlisted action. Our general comments included that the development does require approval from Dutchess County Department of Health for the well, as well as sewage disposal, and we would remind the applicant that they were required to file the map with the county clerk's office. And then, in terms of the project bonding, the applicant has submitted a cost estimate for the general site improvements excluding the improvements for that are, the site improvements that are unique to the approval in terms of drainage, as well as site access, in the amount of $16,139. And we found that to be fair and reasonable, and suggested that the bond should be for that amount. We also recommend a 10% one-year maintenance bond in the amount of $1,613.40 to be retained by the town for a period requiring to ensure satisfactory condition of the improvements. And finally, the inspection fee. Because the lot requires approvals through Dutchess County, there, and if there's no public water sewer proposed, there are no additional fees required for inspection costs.
All right. Any questions on that from the board? If not, I think we'll go right to the draft short EAF Parts II and III. You could continue along with that.
The applicant has prepared Part I of the EAF, and we have reviewed that. We have prepared Part II and Part III of the EAF, and I'll go through those questions one by one, and we can just answer whether there's no impact or moderate to large impact. The first question is, will the proposed action create material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? We have determined that to be of no impact. Will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of use of land? For that one also, we have decided it's no impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Also, no impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristic that caused establishment of a critical environmental area? For that one also, we decided it's no impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure or mass transit, biking or walkway? For that one, also, no impact. Sixth on the list is, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? For that one, also, no impact. Excuse me. Seventh on the list is, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? For that, no impact. Public or private wastewater treatment utilities, also, no impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of imported historic or archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? For that one, also, no impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? No impact. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No impact. Will the proposed action create a hazard or environmental resources to human health? Also, no impact. Upon review of Parts II of the EAF, we wanna point out that the applicant has provided a letter from Schipol and also from D.C. stating no adverse impacts as justification for no impacts for the previous comments. With that being said, I leave it to the board. If you find this appropriate, you could potentially have a negative declaration.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board on that?
Sure.
Well, I think, having gone through that, why don't we go right to the draft negative deck that you did prepare, assuming that the board might go this direction?
Yes, I feel like based on the review of what the applicant has provided, we did not find an area where there'd be any impacts, whether it be small impact or moderate to large impacts. For the most part, applicant provided justification, unsatisfied, or review to say there's no impact, so.
All right. And it looks like the draft negative declaration basically just reiterates a lot of the, actually flushes out in a little bit more detail what the EAF Part II had in it. I have no questions on the neg deck. Does anyone on the board? All right. Can we go right to a motion? Well, first, actually, let me just ask Dominic if you have any questions or suggestions on this?
No, thank you for the opportunity, though.
Okay. So let's do a motion that combines the EAF's Parts II and III and the draft neg deck together for this fairly simple one, well, one or two lot subdivision, depending how you look at it, and lot line realignment. So is there a motion to approve the draft EAF Parts II and III and the draft neg deck for the Fantozzi and Cabrera subdivision and lot line realignment as reviewed and revised, not revised, none of them are revised, tonight, and authorize the chair to sign the relevant documents?
So moved.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Bob, seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. All right. So now, we can move on to the draft resolution that Dominic prepared for the board.
Yes, you should have, it's draft number three. It's dated August 11th. In the interest of time, I won't recite the, or go over the first several pages, which really is the procedural aspects of the project to this point. We will modify Page Two to add in the date of your adoption of the negative declaration which just occurred. The conditions of the approval are the most relevant, in my opinion. The applicant will have to address any outstanding items that are contained in the engineer's August 8th memo, which has been distributed to the applicant's representative. The applicant will also have to secure the endorsement of the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for the realty subdivision approval. Since this involves a lot line change, the deeds of conveyance will have to be prepared to effectuate the lot line change. There is also a performance and maintenance bond consistent with the memo that you received from your engineer that would require a performance bond in the amount of $16,139 for a term not less than two years to secure the satisfactory installation of the public improvements. And the, or conditions related to that bond as well are there, including the maintenance bond, which has been suggested by the engineer, standard conditions regarding signing the owner's consent block and final plan revisions. There is the creation of one new residential lot, and so the board would make a finding that recreational facilities haven't been provided, and so as such, a recreation fee in the amount of $5,000, or the amount that's based in the fee schedule that ineffective the time that the plat is presented for signature would be required. There's also the standard condition that all fees are otherwise paid and escrow deposits are made, and the fact that this resolution will be binding not only on the applicant, but any other successors and interests.
All right. Is the applicant present? Why don't you just come up, and we'll see if you have any questions about the resolution?
Thank you. Ben Galey from the law firm J&amp;G Law in Walden. And Mr. Fantozzi is also here. I wanna thank first the board and the consultants for getting us to this point. I just have one comment on the approval resolution. There's requirements in there, as were mentioned, to post a bond for $16,000 to secure the public improvements, and, but there are no public improvements on this subdivision. It's just your typical house improvements. There's a driveway, there's some grading, there's the drainage installation. None of these improvement will be conveyed to the town. They're not dedicated to the town, so they're not public improvements. And the, under your subdivision regulations, a bond is required for public improvements, not for private improvements. Under this requirement, anytime somebody wants to build a house, they would have to post a bond simply for the work. For instance, post a bond to secure the installation of the driveway to their house, and that's certainly not the requirement in your subdivision regulations, and it's just not practical. It doesn't happen. And the memo and the approval resolution refer several times to the bond for public improvements, but there are no public improvements here. Public improvements get conveyed to the town, such as a new subdivision road that serves many houses in that subdivision. We don't have that here. So I would request that the board delete the provisions in the approval resolution that require a bond and refer to public improvements and construction fees of improvements, because we just don't have those here. We just have your typical, single-family home site improvements.
So Denise, do you wanna start off?
Of course, I can address that. So I will refer to a July 30th memo that was provided by the applicant's engineer to provide, on behalf of the applicant, the cost estimate to cover only the general improvements regarding grading, drainage, and improvements to the driveway. And although schematically you're saying those aren't public improvements, they're improvements that are contingent upon, for example, the drainage, ensuring drainage doesn't go into neighboring properties, ensuring the requirements of the findings in the no impact negative declaration regarding site drainage are met and installed in accordance with the site plan. As well, the driveway, we, as the planning board, needs to ensure the driveway is accessible for emergency vehicles and that the improvements are installed in accordance with the site plan, and that's why the bond for only those improvements of $16,139 is being requested.
The bottom line is, those are not public improvements. And under your code, a bond is required only for public improvements, not for your everyday routine site improvements for a single-family home.
Dominic, would you like to weigh in on that?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Galey and understand his point. The fact of the matter is, is that the Town of Fishkill Code, Section 13214, is written a little bit more broadly than that. And so I'm just going to read it. It says, "After adoption of a resolution approving a final subdivision plat and before the plat is endorsed by the planning board chairman, the applicant shall be required to complete at his expense all street or other improvements as shown on the approved construction plan." It says, "and other improvements," or otherwise specified in the resolution, "or as an alternative to file with the town board a performance bond." What does "other improvements" mean? It doesn't say, you know, the section is called completion of improvements or filing of bond. It doesn't specifically say that it's public or limited to public improvements. I understand the point, and I think in most municipalities, if not all the ones that we most commonly practice in, that a bond is not required for improvements, just if you, you know, if this wasn't a subdivision, to Mr. Galey's point, if this was just a lot and someone was coming in and getting a building permit, and they had building plans, they would get a building permit, they would construct the new home, and then they would have to show that they finished the construction of the new home, including grading and utilities and anything else that they would need to do as part of developing that house. And then, once they've shown that they've finished that construction, they would get a CO. The difference here is that it's as part of a subdivision approval, so it is before the board. I would like to agree with Mr. Galey, but I don't... like to agree with Mr. Galey, but I don't think that the language quite goes as far as he's saying. I think the determination is really up to the board as to whether or not you would require a developer building a single-family residence to bond these improvements and to go through the cost of bonding these improvements when the bond itself is sixteen thousand and then the maintenance bond is one, is around one thousand. I, I think it's, it's reasonable for the board to make a determination that, that that would not be required.
I'd like to make just one other point, if I may.
Go ahead.
In the subdivision regulations is a definition of performance bond. It says, "A bond to assure the full and satisfactory completion of the required public improvements." We all know there are no public improvements here. Your definition of performance bond is to secure the completion of public improvements. We're talking about not a developer, just a single-family homeowner who wants to build a house for his daughter. And require him to post sixteen thousand dollars upfront is just, number one, it's not permitted by your subdivision regulations, because these are not public improvements. And number two, it just seems unreasonable and unnecessary to impose that burden on him.
It, it is not an unreasonable request, in my opinion.
All right, what do board members think?
Waive the bond.
Yeah, okay. So if the board decided to waive the performance bond, we could delete?
It would be sections five through eight.
Yeah, five through eight, and probably insert a different place earlier in the resolution for the waiver of the performance bond, or?
I have one comment.
Can it be, can it be a new five instead of?
For public records keeping, I would suggest you outline the reason or the rationale behind waiving the bond, so that a bad precedence, or not bad, but like negative precedence is not set. So it's just aligning the uniqueness of this particular application and why the bond is being waived.
It, it is a shared drive, so I think that's a great idea.
Well, this is a new one to me, so if any board members can come up with some thoughts on this, or perhaps Dominic, if, if we're struggling with wording for the resolution, maybe you could come up with something?
Yes, what I would do is I would go to the top of page three, where the board has made a number of findings. It is in, whereas, that, you know, starts at the, at the middle of page two, continues on, has a number of letters. The last letter would be E, so this would be letter F, and state that the board hereby waives any requirement for, for the posting of a performance bond due to the fact that the improvements as shown on the final subdivision plat are located entirely on private property.
I would probably suggest adding to that, and the fact that this is basically creating one new building lot, that once the subdivision is approved, would require simply a building permit, one building permit. I don't want this to become a precedent for even a two-lot subdivision or a three-lot subdivision, because we have required performance bonds for some of those, depending?
Like on Johnson Trails, which you dealt with in extension tonight, but in, in that case, there are, there are public improvements that are proposed as part of that.
Yeah, and of course, that involves a new public road going into the subdivision.
Yes.
But I, I seem to recall there have been several two- and three-lot subdivisions where we've also required performance bonds for things like you mentioned before, Denise, about drainage improvements that could affect adjacent or downstream lots, and even a driveway connection to a town road, which is the case here. So I think I'm, I'm willing to waive this particular one, but I want to make it clear that this applies to this particular one new lot and should not be considered.
So I'm typing as I'm going, but this is what I have for section, or letter F, rather, that the board hereby waives a requirement for the posting of any performance bond due to all public impro, all improvements, rather, will occur on private land, and the fact that this approval results in the creation of one new residential lot.
If he wasn't selling it to, or giving it to his daughter, would it make a difference if it was somebody else, an outsider?
It, it would not, and as I was saying earlier, like if there wasn't a subdivision at all, if it just happened to be a lot, you know, and, and a person went into, with their building plans, to the building department, they wouldn't have to post any performance security for these improvements.
Because I thought we went for the performance bonds because we had things being done and were not completed, like our previous project on eighty-two and fifty-two.
Yeah, those are, those are more-
That's the one, and everything is-
Those are, yeah, those-
-going after, because it's all inside.
Those are not subdivisions residential. They're things like you were mentioning, a self-storage facility that was interrupted and never got completed and became an eyesore, or, um, things like that. And, you know, even though small subdivisions that we've had before us, and sub, so the town board decided to adopt new regulations to allow performance bonds to be required for basically outside of the subdivision regulation procedures, because we, we had by practice, but not by code, been requiring performance bonds, but it was kind of a spotty application of that. So the new provisions deal in site plan reviews for performance bonds for non-residential developments, basically. And they also can apply to multifamily residential that require a site plan review. Subdivision regulations are a different provision, and the, the performance bond provision has always been in the subdivision regulations. But in, in this kind of a case where it's a basically one-new-lot subdivision, I think that's quite different from a two-lot, or a three-lot, or a ten-lot, or you name it subdivision. So that's why I'm-
I'm waiving.
Yeah, that's why I'm willing to-
I just want to make sure that we're not stepping in, gonna, stepping in it.
And I think, I think there's two practical matters to consider as well. I mean, the cost of, of obtaining this bond, you know, would be significant, and in addition to that, you know, it has to go through the process before the Town Board, as well as payment, you know, for the consultants to review that bond and, and to get that in place. You know, given the de minimis amount, and on to that point, you know, the likelihood of the town actually calling that bond, you know, to, to go out there and, and perform this work, especially for these fairly low amounts of sixteen thousand dollars or a one thousand dollar maintenance, you know. Like, you know, the remedy is, is more likely is, is that if a building, if, if a construction commenced but didn't complete, they, they don't get their CO, you know, just, just like anybody else. So I, I've gone ahead and made that change. I've also renumbered all of the paragraphs. So now we have paragraphs one through eight that have to be satisfied prior to the signing of the subdivision plat, and paragraph nine being the one that says it's on binding effect.
So in that paragraph on page five, upon satisfactory completion, the conditions numbered one through eight, and then we're scratching the nine through twelve.
Correct.
Yes. All right, so we have a number of revisions resulting from that one request, which I think was a legitimate request from the applicant's attorney. So, um, any other questions on this? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the Fantasi Cabrera subdivision and lot line realignment as reviewed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
So move.
Second.
Bob, Bob got the motion, and Craig got the second. Any further discussion or questions about what we just did, decided to do? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny, I'm going to send this to you now.
Thank you so much, Sean. I appreciate that. Thank you. Big travels.
Thank you, Anisha.
Good night.
Okay, the next project review is Century Aggregates, 107 U.S. Route Nine Site Development Plan, or to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on July 29, 2025, a revised draft PUL EAF Part Two, a draft EF Part Three, a draft neg deck, and a draft resolution of preliminary conditional final approval, and to consider adopting and authorizing the planning board chair to sign those documents. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, maybe you could just very quickly run through the update on the submission that you gave us?
We can, and we appreciate that. Following the July meeting with the direction of the board, the applicant's consultants and the board's review consultants did meet, it was, I understand, a productive meeting. That led to our further submission under the July 30th cover letter, included a number of submissions, including responses to comments, as well as the post-construction noise assessment that the board had spoke of last meeting. The applicant's noise consultant, sound consultant, as well as the board's sound consultant, did review that proposed report, and we thought there was agreement on that. And we did think that there was, and there does remain to be, agreement on the approach on, on the project. Let's start with that proposition. There's no disagreement. We are in agreement on, on general comments. The submission that went in on July 30th, we were hopeful, addressed all the requirements, and it was our understanding that it did address all of the comments of, of the board's consultants. When we've received the review memos, it doesn't appear to us that there are outstanding engineering comments, but there do appear to be additional planning comments, and in particular, the issue regarding vegetation. And it's noted that while the plans generally depict the vegetation that's to be retained on the site around the proposed plant, that additional detail needs to be submitted to, to ensure certain issues. And those comments are then repeated throughout your proposed documents tonight. While every applicant is certainly requesting an approval, we would like to request the opportunity to make the submission in order to address the additional planning comments that were received, in particular regarding the vegetation that's to be retained on the site. That addresses a number of issues, and those types of comments in both the secret documents and that have been carried over into the proposed resolution appear on a number of issues. And I think it's benefiting not just the applicant, but ultimately the board, to have the opportunity to do the further submittal to address the ongoing planning comments on that, on that issue. Basically, we'd like to have a clean, complete record in front of the board to consider. There are, in our opinion, things that could be reviewed and addressed again in both the secret determination, as well as the resolution, if we're afforded the opportunity to do a further submittal to address what appear to be outstanding planning comments. We're hopeful that can get submitted immediately. We would make one request if the board would allow that procedure, which is, if agreeable, we'd like the ability for our applicant consultant team to review a submittal informally with simply the, your planning and engineering consultants to make sure there's not an additional round of comments that considered, continue to say, "We need more detail." We'd like to get that detail addressed. We'd like to have the board to consider what is a full, complete application. And if that's allowable, we hope to get that submittal in as soon as next week and have the ability to work directly with your consultants before there's a formal submission to the board. We acknowledge the board's practice of not speaking with consultants once the formal submission, but what we've had now for a few iterations is, we think we've addressed everything, but there continue to be additional comments. So we'd ask the board to consider that procedure. We are in agreement on this. We just want to provide that additional detail that seems to still be lacking.
Can I ask a question? What are you talking about that we haven't agreed to? I thought we sort of agreed to the FUPR zone from the plant to-
Oh, we did. That's correct, and that's shown on the plans.
Is that what you're talking about now?
That's correct, and it's shown on the plans. But we read the planning comments to say, they generally depict that, but we need additional detail to ensure that it addresses several issues. We just want to make sure that the record's complete on whatever additional details your planning consultants asking for. We don't want anything outstanding.
Mr. Chair, I don't remember anything that was that drastic.
Yeah, I think you're right, Fred.
I mean, you're, you're way above where we were. Our main concern was, if the vegetation disappeared for whatever reason, it was put back. So if there was a fire, all right, it burnt down that vegetation, you would have to put it back, so it wouldn't be there from the Route Nine to the plant. All right, and that's what we were looking, I believe that's what we were looking for. I don't know, because, you know.
Yeah, and the, the site plan details that I think were raised in CPL's memo, which got carried over into the resolution, were very technical in nature about some observations about how it should be shown on the plans. There also were some things that I picked out of reviewing the memo and the resolution that I think we could probably agree to right here tonight, that probably should be deleted from the memo and the resolution. I think the only way we can do that, and with, so let me also just say, I do not like the idea of authorizing our consultants' work to be reviewed by you before it comes to the board. I'm not going to do that. That's not practice the board has ever done, and I don't plan to start now.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I think the way we can get closer, and if you're not comfortable with, you know, having some of those things in the, particularly in the draft neg deck and in the resolution, we can probably figure out a way to be able to move ahead with those tonight in a way that might be able to satisfy the board and the applicant. But what I'd like to do first is just go through, especially the CPL memo, which, again, we don't really need to get to the resolution until we've gone through the memo. we don't really need to get to the resolution until we've gone through the memo, because I think you'll see that there are parallels exactly between the two. And I think that'll give the board a better idea of what we're talking about in terms of your discomfort and how those might be able to be addressed. And I, I also have some observations myself on some of the points in the CPL memo that I think were probably not quite accurate. So, if everybody agrees, can we go through the CPL memo? We'll ask, I don't want to put Liz on the spot, but welcome. What a way to start. But I'm pretty sure I understand precisely the ones that you're talking about, and let's see what we can do to address those. Do you want to add on to that, Mark?
No, I'm...
Okay. So Liz, if you would be so kind as to go through the CPL memo, and...
Of course. My view was that the remaining things that ended up as conditions of approval were details that needed to be clarified on the plan. They're really pretty minor verbal things to be added to the plan. So, for example, item number four, "In order to implement an effective visual and noise shield per a prior comment, revise the plan set to, quote, 'outline or show shaded areas to delineate the area intended for the preservation of trees and prohibition of tree removal on sheets SP1, PR1, and ESC1.'" This comment remains to be addressed per the comments below. So, it's just basically a matter of being specific, that there's actually vegetation there, which there is, and it's just a matter of verbiage on the plan. So that's that one. And then going down to five, it just becomes more specific, and it's really on the east side of the creek where it isn't clear. On the west side of the creek, there are lots of little, you know, there was a tree survey done years ago, but it didn't happen to be done on the whole site, so you're not seeing tree survey markings. So instead of asking for a tree survey on the east side, acknowledging that there's vegetation there, if there's a little bubbled area that shows an area of vegetation, it just needs to say that in the middle. So it's a matter of adding verbiage to the plans to say that by way of not having to do any kind of a survey of the existing vegetation. So, the idea was shortcut, that's what my comment was about. Same thing on number six, on the west side. For clarity about the proposed preservation area, if you're going to preserve an area, you want to see what you're preserving, or at least say something about it. "To the southeast of the proposed location of the concrete batch plant, show existing trees or areas of existing trees, areas outlined with scallop lines with the label 'area of existing trees and other vegetation on the west side of Clove Creek on sheet SP1, sheet PR1, and sheet ESC1."
So...
So it's just really on both sides, and the idea was if the vegetation is proposed to be retained, just to clarify it. And that's, that's really it.
Well, there were, were some others, but let's start with five and six.
Okay.
So what I found by looking at these bullet points and then looking on the site plans was that, um, what was requested was shown and labeled on SP1 and PR1, but not labeled on ESC1. So, that was almost there.
Okay.
And then in number six, A, B, and C, what I found was, um, SP1 actually did not appear to be labeled or on ESC1, but was labeled on PR1. So the lines were shown, but the labeling was not there. And again, that was something that was very, you know, a very technical thing that is easy to, to put in there.
I think, I think we labeled it typical, meaning that anything with scallops would identify vegetation. The only reason why we limit the callouts is because it gets very cluttered on a plan. So we use typical as a standard drafting method to be able to say, anywhere there's scallops or a line type of this type, it's, it's a typical, anywhere you see it on any plan in the plan set.
Right. And maybe a way to do that would be to put it in, in the legend instead of a one time on, on one part of the plan and not on the others, because that might, that might be able to resolve that part of it.
Legend and then have it on all sheets.
Yeah. And any sheets where, any sheets where those...
I'm sorry, I have one on all sheets, excuse me.
Any sheet, sorry. And I, what I think is any sheets where those lines appear. So I mean, that's not saying they have to be on all sheets, but the ones that are mentioned here, SP1, PR1, and ESC1.
Could I offer that if we show a legend on the title sheet or the site plan, it, it pertains to every sheet, every detail, only because you're going to run out of space to be able to put the legend on every single sheet. And it's a standard drafting measure, and I'm just asking the board if, if we could do that in lieu of just putting that legend on every single sheet. Because there are line types in that legend that won't be on some sheets, and will be, it'll cause more confusion.
So does that sound reasonable to you, Liz? Okay. Then, let's see. It looks like another major one, not major, but big one was number eight, dealing with the propane storage area. You want to just quickly mention that one?
Where are you?
On number eight, on your page two of your memo.
Oh, okay, I thought you said, okay.
And it goes on the page three.
I thought you said page 11, sorry.
So this is dealing with the propane storage area and revising details to more clearly show what's going on there, and so you're suggesting A, B, and C, and D, specifically requesting elevation and exterior views and all those things. I think those, that's a pretty easy one to do. I, I don't want to get into a debate about whether or not they were requested before, but it certainly seems like something prudent and fairly typical to do.
Might I point out the detail was on the elevation sheets? We did show the propane tanks. You know, the, you know, remember the elevations we did of the batch plant? We do show the elevate, we show those propane tanks in there. There is no roof on this, there's no structure with a roof.
So that may be a matter of what was with the site plan set that we were reviewing this time, didn't have that?
No, I think we submitted the elevations.
Can, can you show it on the...
I have a separate sheet for elevations, which the board had asked for, which we put... In the site plan set, Mark? Yeah, I think it's... Hold on, let me see if I can get it for you. That's no problem. Do you know which...
Would have been one of the last ones.
It's, um...
Yeah, I'm not sure it was...
D2, CD1, so go to CD1.
Well, that's a planned view, but we did an elevation view when we did the elevations of the batch plant. It may have been, it may have been a prior submission. I think it was a prior submission. Sorry, we can include it, but it was on there.
Yeah, I do remember seeing the elevations, but I think since it wasn't included in what was being reviewed...
Right.
So isn't it a matter of adding back a sheet? Is that what...
No, we can do that, that's fine.
Yeah, and then that can be referenced in the, in the resolution as...
You know what the sheet, like, number is, or...
It was a separate drawing.
Okay. So adding back the sheet with the elevations.
Will that basically show all the four things that Liz was mentioning? And you're, let's say you're indicating there is no roof or cover over there?
No, it's, uh, basically, as you look at CD1 or 2 on this sheet, it's, it's actually a concrete pad, and we are putting concrete blocks around it to protect the tanks. I think it's the last one. Last one of the batch? I believe so, second to last one possibly. Oops, there it went. There it is, right there. Those are the propane tanks, and there's a, they sit on a concrete pad, and they're protected by those concrete blocks.
And so then, so that, that drawing probably does not include a reference to the elevation drawings, I think.
Right, I can.
Yeah, I think that would help a lot.
Okay.
So I think so far, we're doing pretty good. And then, Liz, I think the, the last of the things that really went into the resolution stem from page four, the noise section of your memo, which has a lot of discussion about so-called inconsistencies between locations.
I think the thing that threw me off is I thought there were four different measurement locations, and it looked like there were three. So, maybe I'm misinterpreting that?
So I think, Mark, you could probably explain this better than I can, but those locations are not dealing with the post-construction noise study scope. They're dealing, they're dealing with the actual noise assessment that was previously submitted.
I believe that to be correct. Unfortunately, Brian's not here.
Yeah. I, I took a look, and that's definitely what happened.
I believe that's true.
And so, um, there's some mix-up, I think, Liz, that you might have had in terms of the locations shown on that large map that was supposed to relate directly to the map for the noise impact assessment. That was previously submitted and dated revised 5/23/25.
All right. Well, I know that I went over that item with George.
And so that's...
Because I thought there was a scope for post-construction.
There is a scope, but not a map at this time. The scope, if you look at the scope, it basically refers to the fact that a site plan map will be submitted as a result of the post-construction noise study. So there is no map of that yet, but there's a verbal description in the scope, which...
And what was the post-construction noise measuring, wait a minute, there was an image that was recently submitted.
There was a large map that was sort of a standalone map that was not really labeled as to what it should go with, but if you look at it closely, it's, in my mind, it clearly was to reflect an update of the map that was previously submitted with the noise impact study.
Yeah, it's the last item listed in the memo, site plan map for noise impact assessment, Highland Valley Concrete Plant Prepared By, and wasn't indicated, dated May 29, 2024, and then it says last revised 7/23/25. So are you saying that was, your understanding is that that's a map for the, the original testing, and that they revised it?
The original noise study, which had, um...
Okay.
It had, what, three ambient measurement locations and four receptor locations. See, I'm remembering all this stuff.
Okay, so it sounds like, Jonathan, is it your feeling that all the comment 15A through C is not pertinent?
Um, not exactly.
Okay.
The part that, might be easier to look at the resolution temporarily...
I wish we had, I knew it was part of the submittal.
So, actually, I happen to have the noise impact study here, and...
I don't know that I brought the entire file, actually.
I happen to have the site plan map for the noise impact assessment, the one received, well, it's not clear, but it's, looks like it's July something, 2025. The earlier one was...
July 30th, you just jumped?
Yeah, the earlier one was May 28th, 2025. And I think the only real update to it was the fact that the new version, that looks basically exactly like the older version, now has the Greenway Preservation Area shown on it.
Correct.
Which also, in many ways, relates directly back to the noise impact study. So, I think that's what the intention of the submission by the applicant was, was to, in effect, update the earlier version for the noise impact study. However, your comment was on, was a good one, in that, if I can find your memo again. Was that, first, do you suggest... Back to the resolution.
Were you looking at the resolution or the memo?
Yeah, it's, um...
Because it's page...
So, okay, so in your...
Page four of the memo, but...
Yeah, in your memo, number 15, um, A, letter A talks about, I think, the confusion over the four different measurement locations, um, shown on that map. And it, the map actually shows three locations for ambient sound level, but four locations for receptor locations. So, then your B says, "The separate map entitled Site Plan Map for Noise Impact Assessment", et cetera, et cetera, "should be included as part of the plan set," or maybe more clearly indicated as being an appendix to the original noise and impact assessment, either one of those.
Right.
But to clarify that that map is not intended to be the map for the post-construction noise monitoring study.
So an appendix to the original noise study?
Because that's, that's what it was. It was basically not even appended to it, it was just inserted into the folder.
Yeah, I...
And that makes it confusing to know what exactly it was meant to be. So, I spent a good bit of time last night, after I got tired of working on other parts of the planning project, and I, I just, I was mad. I wanted to get to the bottom of it, and I think I did.
So to be clear, we're going to, that plan that we submitted, it would be referenced as an appendices to the noise study? It wouldn't be part of the site plan set?
It could be, it could be appended. If it, if the original intent was to be appended to the noise study, then that's probably the way to do it.
Okay.
And then...
Good.
You know, the other parts of it are, are fine. I mean, as, as Liz mentioned, Part C, that Site Plan Map for the Noise Impact Assessment, and that's, that's what it was titled, so if, if I had looked at that a little earlier, I probably would have been a lot clearer on what it was supposed to be. Just being a little clear on the preparer's name, title, instead of just the initials BTM, and, um, the company name, date, all that stuff. So just making sure that it's clearly marked as to what it is, who prepared it, and the dates on it. Other than that...
So is item A even needed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, on the resolution... So on the resolution, we're not really reviewing the resolution, but just to be clear on how your memo related to the insertions of things on the resolution. So for that particular item, we're talking about number six revised.
So A comes out in number six?
So in number six, right, well, first of all, number six revised the noise assessment site plan map. It was just clear to take out noise assessment before site plan map and say revise the site plan map for the noise impact assessment Century Aggregates, Inc., to address the following, and then delete A, the condition that said, that talks about the four different locations and the three different locations. That whole A comes out.
And the reference to the post-construction noise monitoring plan comes out.
Right. Correct. And then B becomes A and C becomes B. And, you know, those things were fine, the way they ended up being worded. And then I just said, in the new B on the Site Plan Map for Noise Impact Assessment, a third bullet would be the legend should be revised to state that, let's see. Oh yeah, to state that, and this is quotes, A2 Ambient Sound Level Reading and in quotes, R3 Receptor Location, refer to the study locations on the Century Aggregates Highland Valley Concrete Plant Noise Impact Assessment Report Revised 5/23/25. So it's basically just making it clearer what this stuff is all about. And then the other parts that we already talked about in the resolution that dealt with the other things, the elevation drawings, they'll all be taken care of if you submit those.
Correct.
And so all those can be taken out of the resolution. So ultimately, I guess it's probably a better idea to revise those and resubmit them for the September meeting. I was hoping maybe we could just do all this tonight, but I think it's too complicated. And so we'll get cleaner documents, we can do revisions. Liz, you can just do a very simple new memo that summarizes what happened. Any references to these things that are in the draft NAG deck can be taken care of or scratched based on the new submittal, hopefully. And we won't have to really put a whole lot into the new resolution once-
Will be taken out.
Will be taken out. There'll be a couple of things still mentioned in it if there's still remaining to be done.
Of course.
But hopefully they won't be.
That would be the goal.
Yes. And I'm just going to be very clear to Liz that we really want this to be the last review of all this that we're going to do, and so the next meeting, the September meeting, is going to be very quick going through. If the board wants to go through the draft EAP Part Two, tonight we can do it, just to make sure that we're on the right way.
Are we doing the NAG deck tonight, or no, you want to wait for next time?
It's up to the board.
Okay.
I think the applicant was requesting earlier that they wanted to revise documents so that the NAG deck itself would reflect that as well.
Correct, we're appreciative of that. The memo attached to the proposed Part Three had a number of references to the items we've discussed tonight, and I think it would be cleaner to have that further submission and review that proposed Part Three supportive of the NAG deck.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Okay.
Something's come to you in the middle of the night.
All right.
We learned a lot about how the product is being made. You have gravel from the plant, you know, from the area. You have stone from the area. Something comes in called cement or mix that comes from outside. Where's that stored when it comes in? I didn't see any place for it being stored, now I know it goes into a silo.
Right.
But when it's dropped off by a truck, is it in bags? Is it immediately dumped in? What if it shows up while they're making cement, they're not going to dump it right in? I'm just, I'm concerned because that's over the aquifer.
Do you remember the, do you remember the three silos that were shown on the plan?
I remember, I know they're going to dump it in there.
No, it's pneumatically installed, so the trucks, you've probably seen them down the road. They have V-shaped bottoms, they have connections, and they pneumatically are, they actually blow the cement up into the silos. That's where they have the bag collectors to minimize any kind of dust that would leave that area because it is a pressurized environment. And that fills those silos and then that's where it's stored.
Perfect, because that was my concern, because the gravel, if it gets wet, it's okay. The stone that gets wet, it's okay. I don't know what happened with that cement or whatever that mixes.
Yeah, the cement-
It's wet, what happens?
You're right, the cement is in the silos.
That'd be a problem. That's why it's in the silos, so it doesn't get wet.
So the process is a submittal, a review, and revision of things?
Right.
Yes. But there's no need for offline consultation?
No, there shouldn't be.
No, okay.
That's why I was trying to go through it as much detail tonight as we could. One question though, for the applicant team is in the resolution, based on the cost estimates that you submitted, do those numbers for the bonds and the inspection fee look like they were based on your estimate?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So any other questions or comments from the board? Denise must have left you sort of a little bit wondering what's going on, but-
I don't believe anything in Denise's memo has changed if they've just, and I think the applicant just confirmed that there's no change to the cost estimate, so-
Yeah, so-
Would you like me to go through it?
What you might do is just re-date it and resubmit it. What do you think, Don, Vic?
I think it's great.
Okay. Should be a lot easier this next round, right?
Yes.
Because you're in faster.
Oh, boy. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time too, going through those. It's appreciated.
Okay. Take care, thanks for coming.
John, I think you've recused yourself from the next item on the agenda, so I'll jump in here.
You are so right, I do recuse myself from the next item, so I will. I actually brought some reading material because I have no idea how long you guys are going to be on this one. So-
You might get through the book, I don't know.
Actually, this is just for Anthony's application. This is Dune Messiah, which is the next version, it's going to be the next movie that they show out. So I want to make sure I finish reading it before the movie comes out.
We expect your book report later on in the agenda tonight.
Okay. Well, I'm halfway through the book, so I don't want to say that I finished reading the book while you're still going on with this application.
All right. Well, enjoy your reading. The next item on the agenda is Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Redesign, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, Board to Review the Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on July 30th, 2025. I do want to make a few points before we get started because it has been a while since this has been on the agenda. This board already declared our intent to serve as lead agency last October, and after receiving no objections, the Town of Fishkill Planning Board formally declared itself lead agency, that was last December. This project last appeared before our board back in February, and it was actually the first meeting that our current planning board engineer, MJ Engineering, served as our consultant. And so, you know, from what I've seen from emails over the last few months, in addition to the submittal package received this month, quite a bit has happened. Quite a bit has changed with the plan, so and we've also continued to receive email comments from the public, which all reach the board and they are part of the project record, so I'm not gonna, we've received quite a few messages, I'm not going to list them all, but this board has received them. So I would ask the applicant's representative team to please reintroduce themselves this evening and summarize what's happened since February, and also summarize the changes that have been made to the plan set. I did see a PowerPoint presentation or some slides that may be helpful to this board in explaining those changes, so I'll turn it over to the applicant team.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Helen Moch with Minster Moch on behalf of the applicant HHFT. And next to me is Amy Casalla, the Executive Director of HHFT, and in the front row is Erin Warner from AKRF. And it's true, it's been a minute since we were here, and the reason for that is that the HHFT team was reworking some of the site plan elements based on comments from the board, the board's consultants, neighbors, and the public. Amy's going to walk through a presentation deck on the design side, so the two main design changes have to do with the parking. The, what had been an asphalt parking area at a higher grade on the southern portion of the site has been replaced with a grassy area and gravel. And the second design element has to do with the rest house structure. It had been at grade and now it is a buried rest house and landscaping around it to improve the historic integrity of the manor building. I should note that the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation reviewed the rest house redesign and confirmed that there is no adverse impact to historic, historical or archaeological resources. And then, this is not a design element, but a change and update really to the traffic study was made based upon comments from the town's traffic consultant. And so an updated traffic study was submitted that shows a left turn lane into Duchess Manor. So I'm going to let Amy go ahead and walk you through the presentation deck, and then I'll come back for questions and just talk about next steps. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Okay. So just a refresher, this is the Duchess Manor site as it currently stands. It's been long used as an event space for weddings, everyone has their Duchess Manor story. So they had, you know, significant events here with parking and they parked behind and in front of this. So we're envisioning a reconfiguration of the site where we remove all of those additions and restore the historic structure back to the original brick structure on all four sides. So this is one rendering and you can see the landscaping setting around the building that we've been refining in this process. And so I'll just walk you through some of those. So on the parking side, this is where we had started, and then we, in meeting with the neighbors, we scaled back some of that parking, allowing for some to be a gravel on the sort of 9D side to the right, and then also on the left-hand side to the south, that that would be sort of grass, more like a grass overflow. And we had discussed this with the neighbors, we talked a lot about the buffer on the edge of the properties. They, at the time, we shared this version of this, there were comments about the amount of regrading we were doing to the site, where currently the north part of it is sort of elevated and then the south part is sort of sunken down a hill a little bit. So there was question about the amount of regrading we were doing, the sense of the view currently from the residences to the south being more of a lawn environment. And so we continued to seek efficiencies in the design process that would address, kind of play with that idea, so this is where we've gone. And so the total parking remains the same, we've just really tried to make this more comparable, honestly comparable to how it is set up right now. So the request was have most of the parking up in the existing lot to the manor now. So that is the paved lot in front of the manor. And we did take out some of the trees we had in there just to enable us to put more of the parking up there. So that would be for most days of the year where people are parking. And then the part to the south then is more of an overflow lot. So what's in gray is in gravel and then the lawn area is stabilized. And that's sort of a rough estimation of the bubble of that, but that can be refined. When we shared this with the neighbors recently, they asked for us to put the buffer back on the edge, so we're happy to do that in between the properties, similar to how it had been in this version, right? So there's a big tree line there, so we'll incorporate that buffer back into that southern edge of the property. So that's keeping the existing, you know, parking area and driveway configuration with that hill slope the way it is, which is why we have that zigzag pathway to make it an ADA connection up that slope back to the house. Any questions on parking?
Yeah, can you elaborate on this buffer plan that you're talking about along that, I guess, was it 20 Chorus Lane?
Yes, yes.
Because it's not really on the plan set, it's not really, it's kind of just a shaded area. What extent of a buffer, because that is a major concern-
Comment, right.
-that I have, and I know the public does as well, so.
So we have it drawn out from the prior iteration and the team is already integrating it back into the drawing set.
Do you know what kind of vegetation or is it structural?
It had been, in the previous iteration, it had been slightly bermed, a mix of deciduous and conifer, so you get that year-round coverage, and then different ages of planting so you can get some bigger trees right away, and then some other things that will fill in as they mature, just so there's not that day-one kind of sense of too small and too kind of see-through.
And I'm not sure if it helps the board or not to know exactly where 20 Chorus, because I know it's on the left side of the screen, the gray part, isn't that 20?
The next house over after 14 Chorus, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it sounds like something that's going to be added in a future plan set. We definitely would want to pay attention to what exactly is going there, because that was really not, at least for me, not clear from this iteration of the plan, so I just definitely see a more defined buffer plan there, so.
Yes, certainly.
So that area which is to the left, which is gray, light gray?
No, microphone.
Oh, sorry, light gray.
Thank you.
That is gravel.
What's in gray is gravel.
And the additional is going to be just grass?
It's a stabilized grass, so it'll just look like a lawn. And we'd have a gate so that if it's, if you're at capacity, you only open that up. So somebody's not just going to wander down there and park there, we'd have to have a gate that lets them through. So that does accomplish keeping most of the parking further away from the neighbors most of the year.
And that area will only be opened if the other lot gets full?
Correct. And obviously the gravel first, and that's further away from the neighbors, and then the last would be the grass area.
And this does not show the lighting, how you're going to handle that parking?
The lighting?
Or the three different parking areas?
Yes, so we're a dawn-to dusk facility, but we do have a lighting plan and we're happy to provide more detail on that. And we do practice all dark sky at night compliant lighting in the project.
And you're going to be using that back house for administrative?
The-
Because we also approved the one on the right already for administrative.
That's where we're currently housed for our offices, correct. And so this lets us move into that space too, at the manor.
What are you going to do with the one on the right?
We might also still need that for staff. It's not actually that big of a manor when you get down to it. Okay. Okay. All right. So anything else on that? I don't want to push us, but...
Any...
Then we'll go to the rest house? Okay.
No, continue.
Okay. So this is where we get into this conundrum we were trying to solve in the last couple of months with this existing detail from the... In the basement floor, it's under the current kitchen, there is this historic wall component. And we really thought, how do we... So it's in that white box to the far left of the image. That's an existing underground walled area that let light and air, and there was a door that would have been the original kitchen to the manor, would have been in the basement. So that, we wanted to unearth, and then we were discussing, how do we really highlight that as a historic part of the feature of the house?
Was that part of the underground railroad?
No. I don't know. But not... I don't think that's in our house history report, no. So this would be what the view from the south would be. You see how that component of that turret, you know, bay window area is there, and we would replicate that back onto the first floor of the building. So that would be the restored view of the building from the south. And what we'd been struggling with from a design perspective is the rest house and how you add a new building next to the historic building without those two things fighting. So we kept struggling with the design of the rest house, and so we've kind of gotten into... Combined the idea of what to do with that wall on the basement level and the rest house, and we've kind of looked at how do we expose that and hide the bathrooms so that they don't fight with the house. And this has been the solution, is to really kind of allow for an ADA, you know, grade that descends gently to the basement entry. And then we'd have that space with the terrain change, the elevation changes, to kind of bury the rest house into, like underneath the event lawn behind the house. And so let's take a look at that. So if you're standing in this, right next to the historic wall facing the bathroom, and we're still, you know, deciding what the actual materials will be here, but that would be... The house would be to your right, and you're staring towards the river, and this would be the view of the rest house, and there'd be a lawn above it. If you're in the rest house, it's just gender-neutral stalls, four of them, and then a storage closet in there.
I've got a question. I don't see a door.
Correct. You just walk right in like this.
What's gonna happen in the winter time?
We have been talking about it. We might have to have those... Have doors all the way up, and then some measure of heating to keep them... The plumbing not freezing.
So I don't know how many people want to drop there.
It is... It is a cold, yeah. Yeah. Yes. So we'd have to have some measure of heating in those. But you can see, so the historic wall is visible behind, so we've had a little back-and-forth with Shippo about how much of that you're exposing, how much vegetation they'd want in front of it versus hiding the feature. To hide the feature or expose the feature, but that's the current proposal, to have that view. There's a stairway that can take you up to the event lawn and the back porch if you wanted to enter the visitor center from the back, or you could walk around. There's a way to go around as well. This is at night, so that's sort of a partial answer to the lighting question, but we're looking at lower lighting. And again, we're dawn-to dusk. We do light around the bathrooms just for safety and security, but most of the other site lighting would not stay on. And that was that. Do you have any questions on the rest house?
It's the capacity of the rest house.
What was that?
Capacity of the rest house.
If four stalls.
The grassed parking area, right now it's kind of shown of an ambiguous shape, I guess.
Yes.
Is there any way that that could be reconfigured in a way that would encourage parking as far away as possible from that neighboring property? Right now, it's just kind of...
Yeah.
Really has no form.
Sure. It is a bubble. Right. So we are working...
I know it's not gonna be painted. It's, you know, it's a grassed area.
Right.
But I mean, can it be, you know...
We are exploring that, so... No, the mouse doesn't show, does it? Yeah. So in this area, we're looking at if we can pull it this way, we're gonna look at reducing the drive lane, just so we could narrow this out a little, and that might allow us to pull this over a little bit.
And then give you more room for buffering?
And then looking at reshaping that. Yeah, exactly. Making room for the buffering, keeping it... We are trying to budge that way. You know, this is a steep slope here, so we do have... Now that we're not regrading that, it is kind of... You still have a hill condition to work with, but we're looking at narrowing this, seeing how far we can go over in this direction. There is the well here, so we have to be mindful of the well. But we are looking at making this as kind of tight and efficient as possible to kind of shrink the size.
Okay. I'll reserve for the comment when we see something further on that. Any comments from the board on what's been presented up until this point?
So there's no lighting in the parking lots?
There is...
Yes.
There is some, but we're dawn-to dusk, so once, you know, people have left, that would be closed down. It would just be security-level lighting, like limited.
And to get from the public parking to the house or to the bathrooms, you have to walk basically through the parking lot. Is there any crossover?
This... Which lot? So from here, there's this walkway.
I'm talking about... No, I say that one, but on the other one.
And on this one, you could go the short route up the hill, or you could take this as the ADA route that would take you up.
I guess if you're using the overflow parking, you're probably gonna have most of the ADA up in the paved parking area.
These would be.
Right.
Right. The parking spaces are here.
How many parking spaces? How many people can you park?
Forty-six.
Both sides?
See, this is why I brought the reading glasses.
There's forty-six and fifty-five.
Yeah.
And then you have the overflow, which is forty-eight.
Yes. So this one is the forty-six plus nineteen for staff. So staff would be mostly here, or in these, this is just for staff going to fourteen chorus. And then this is the fifty-five and forty-eight.
So the parking at fourteen chorus would not be sufficient for all the staff?
It's ten here, but we're gonna have offices in the top two floors of Duchess Manor. There would be staff offices, so there'd be some staff going into there. Some are just in the field, working in the park, and then some might be in this building still.
And the adjacent property to the right also has staff parking, right?
This is fourteen, right here.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
Do you see the bulk of the people that park in this parking area? Do you see them paving shuttles? So really, the movement will be from the left into the shuttle?
Correct. Yeah.
Into the shuttles and then the shuttles.
Right. Coming up to the manor or going over to the shuttle.
We can come back to the board. I do want to get... We have a CPL memo, and we also have an MJ Engineering memo, so I'll turn to Liz for the CPL memo, and then we'll go to MJ Engineering.
So a lot of progress was made, and I tried to spend time in searching also to find the things that I needed from the last memo. So very many comments were addressed. There's a lot more detail here. It's a lot clearer what's proposed and how it will function, in my opinion. I'm saying right up front that, in my opinion, since the board has taken a couple of Seeker actions already to declare themselves lead, there are some comments that remain, but I think it wouldn't hurt to consider authorizing preparation of a full EAF Part II, because typically the board likes to see a draft and go through it and, you know, make some changes before any other steps are taken. So that's one suggestion, that I think there's enough information here. And obviously, the only footnote is we don't have the photometric lighting plan, which I believe will be provided. That will be very helpful. It'll show whether or not there is any glare leaving the site. So that will resolve that issue. So that's my thinking about Seeker and the full EAF. Let's see. One action I'm talking about on page two under general is that the... One of the actions the board will have to take will be considering issuing a certificate of appropriateness as part of the required approvals, and that has to do with the historic nature of the proposal. And so there are a couple of things that I think should be submitted that are a little more clear and set apart, which would be exterior aspects of the proposed architectural plans, including renderings of the proposed building. I know there are site sections that are provided, but there weren't specifically architectural facade plans and renderings, so that would be helpful to the board. And then in terms of exterior aspects of the existing architecture, there are several photographic images throughout the submittal and the supplemental narrative, and I think schematic images of the exterior would be helpful also to guide the board's review. So kind of all packaged together so they can kind of see it all at once. In terms of the plans, again, they were very detailed. I just noticed that the, you know, fourteen chorus doesn't say this is gonna be offices and things like that. So those are really basic requirements to say, this is gonna be an office, this is gonna be a visitor's center. And let's see. You have only one sign that would need any kind of sign approval from the board. Everything else is directional, so those don't need to be approved, so I've tried to say that. In the middle of page three, comment seven, the one gorgeous sign that's proposed, which is the main sign, is seven feet tall, and the height requirement is six. So it's gonna be a matter of either carving down that blade of stone or going for a variance there. We had a couple of comments about the lighting plan, and one of them I've already touched And then it's not completely clear, the direction of light from the fixtures right near the northeastern corner of the site, and that would be helpful. That'll be... That'll show up on the photometric plan. But there's also one sign light, I think, that points up, and the code has an issue with that, but if it can be shown that that's not gonna create off-site or up-in-the-sky glare, that would help the board consider whether or not that's acceptable.
Okay.
And I don't want to get into too much detail. And then I conferred with our traffic engineer about what was submitted for the traffic study, and it looked very reasonable to me, and I could figure it out, and he agreed. So the conclusion is that no impact is anticipated per the traffic impact study, and the project would operate at an acceptable level of service under existing no-build-and-build conditions, and no mitigation is needed for the traffic. But then we, of course, note the concept of having that left-turn lane in, which was recommended a while back, and that's right there on the plans now, so... And that's really it. Really winding down because of all the detail that were provided. And I know that sometimes I had to kind of poke around and find what I needed in the plans. It's a huge set of plans, so I don't know if the board has any questions about anything on those.
All right. I'll ask the board. Any questions for Liz on her comment letter? All right. Nice, well... Oh, sorry. Oh, go ahead, Jody. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I go to Cold Spring a lot, and I know that you guys are gonna have... There's gonna be other points of entry. But on the weekends, when we were trying to come up Route 90 from Cold Spring, it legit is bumper-to-bumper-to-bumper, cars happen all over the street, all the way up. I'm wondering if there's gonna be enough parking, truthfully, for all those cars? Like, there's a lot of cars, and even though I know there's parking... Gonna be parking at other sites along that path.
Yeah. So we've scaled the parking... I mean, this is really just about our offices and the visitor's center in this, but if you're talking about the larger project, which is subject to the environmental review being conducted by New York State, that we've scaled the parking to the projections that we have. So... And there's, you know, also the sense of you don't want to have too much parking. That is one way to limit the visitation, right? So we're trying to hit the right level with that.
I just... I don't know where all these cars are gonna go, and especially once it's really nice and inviting, then more people are gonna wanna come.
Well, we're hoping they'll take the train.
Do you know what I'm saying? That's what's gonna happen. Like, it'll be nice and inviting, and more people will come, and there's gonna be nicer amenities and these things, and I just don't know where all these cars are gonna park, because Route 90 is dangerous enough along that strip.
Right. Well, we hope we're making it safer right now with the improvements at Brignet, so...
That's my only question.
I don't know how many spaces there are, but right in... It's north of the manor house around the western side of the parking. There's kind of a pull-off area, and I think in the imagery, it shows at least one bus there, but it looks like you could have maybe two buses there or three vans, you know, smaller buses. So I guess that's the concept in terms of shuttles maybe coming from the train station, if that's how people are getting to the area, and that they could take a shuttle down there to go on the trails rather than, you know, renting a car and parking it on the side of the road or something like that. So to me, as a planner, it looks like there are options being provided to try to have fewer cars parked on the road. And that's from the experience of having been in one of those cars parked on the road. It's pretty scary.
Yes. We're trying to get the parking on 90 off of 90. There's a section that's kept in the Brignet connector piece that enables us to lower the speed limit in that area, which we thought is really important for pedestrian safety, given the crosswalks there. But otherwise, all the other parking is going off-street.
I mean, in my own... My simple perspective, if the parking lot is full and everybody wants to get out, and it takes three seconds to get out per car, and you got 150 spaces, you got 450 seconds for the whole thing to empty, right? Every three seconds, if it's full. And that is a heck of a lot of cars hitting Route 90. So this... That doesn't seem to equate from an overall traffic point of view with the traffic study telling us there's very little implication. And there seems to be a conundrum here. I don't...
Okay.
And I'm sensitive to it, because I go to Cold Spring a lot as well, and I see the traffic on weekends, and this is gonna exacerbate it. So there's something missing. I just don't know what it is.
Well, and think, too, this isn't when it was a wedding event. You would have everyone coming and going at the same time. But with a hiking or, you know, spending time looking at the visitor's center displays, you're coming at all different times of the day, so it's just the pattern of arrival and departure behavior. It's not everyone coming and going at the same time. It's sort of more distributed throughout the day.
And I'm sensitive to that, but I was... I just went to Cold Spring last weekend, and it was, you know... I mean, with construction and everything, it was a little different, of course. But Saturday at 11 o'clock in the morning, once you got past the railway, it was packed. All the way down into Cold Spring, and, you know, hiking and lunch and on the way back Saturday, late afternoon, it was packed. So it's... And that's now. And Jody's point is, these attractions are going to hopefully attract people, maybe less... Maybe there'll be other modes of transportation rather than cars, but... And that's why I asked my question about the shuttles, because the traffic is going to be into that parking lot and out of that parking lot. Hopefully, the rest of the movement of people will be... Hopefully, the rest of the movement of people will be via shuttles. I think that's kind of what I'm imagining.
Yes, right, right.
So that should cut down on traffic except for in and out of this place. But the traffic going north is going to have to cut across the road.
I mean, I could ask our traffic person to just take a look at whatever the total number of parking spaces is, and, you know, revisit that based on your concern.
Yeah.
I'll have him, you know, look at the video.
I can speak a little bit, this is Aaron Werner, hi, Aaron Werner from AKRF. Um, I can speak a little bit to the methodology on the traffic study that your consultant has looked at. Um, basically, the peak hours were, were developed by looking at what the existing traffic's doing on the road now. Um, so we did October twenty twenty-four, uh, data collection, um, to identify what are the peak hours now for arrivals and departures for this property. Um, and what determined was that it was the weekday late morning or midday, which was between nine and, nine AM and one PM, a weekday afternoon between two and five, a Saturday late morning, midday, between nine AM and one, Saturday afternoon between two and five, Sunday late morning slash midday, which was between nine AM and one, and then Sunday afternoon between two PM and five PM. And then based on all those, all that traffic data, we developed six peak hours that we're using the analysis, right? We have a weekday, late morning, and midday peak hour, which is twelve PM to one PM. We looked at a weekday afternoon peak hour, which is four to five PM, a Saturday late morning, midday, peak hour from eleven fifteen PM to, or AM to twelve fifteen PM, a Saturday afternoon, peak hour, three fifteen to four fifteen PM, and then a Sunday late morning slash midday, peak hour of eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five. So those were what we studied for impacts, based on the patterns that we see now under existing conditions for hiking, traffic, et cetera. Um, and that was all put into the methodology that we worked with CPL to develop, to start.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
When the porch trail goes in, is completed, you're going to have a different type of hiker who's going to be doing that, all right? A lot of the people who go hiking now go uphill, and then they come back down. If you add the porch trail, you're going to have families and kids who will be walking, it's more of a flat.
As we've said numerous times, the Fuhr Trail is under a separate application, a separate environmental impact statement.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just saying traffic-wise.
And the traffic studies that's part of that is encompassing this project as a background project. So if I can.
Well, I understand, I understand that, but he was talking about, I do, because I do hiking, and we walk our dog, and we're down at, you know, we do, and that's uphill, or except for a few, a few trails which are flat, all right, which is where the porch is going to go anyway, all right? Um, never see kids, every once in a while you see a kid. Most of the people who are doing it are teams-up, because it's really not advisable. Um, maybe you don't see old people, excuse me.
Boomers.
Seasons, seasons.
Seasons, okay? But I'm not climbing all the way up anymore, all right? So it's a different type of a traffic coming. When this is in, and people are going to park there, coming up from the city, they're going to do the, the flat, all right? Again, my way of thinking. We're going to have a lot more traffic in the future because of what we're putting in. You're still going to have the hikers, the guys who want to climb that mountain, get in trouble, all right? And then you're going to have the other people, and they'll be able to do, from what I gather, they can even push a carriage on the trail in the future.
Is, is, is the parking study that you mentioned, is that, the traffic study that you mentioned, is that just the traffic for this particular location, or is that taken into consideration the entire traffic up and down by Route ninety?
No.
So the traffic study that is the subject of this application in front of this board right now, Duchess Manor, is for this project.
In and out, and there's the number of additional cars associated with this particular project.
That's correct. So if I could just give a little brief kind of overview about how the traffic studies are working between the two different applications, I'll try to be brief, but the main idea is that the build year is the important aspect here. What's the build year? The analysis year, which is when the application in front of you, the project we're talking about, is going to be completed and operational. This assumes a build year, this project that we're looking at here, of twenty twenty-seven, so the studies is, is looking at traffic for the build year of twenty twenty-seven at this site. The Fuhr Trail, DEIS, FEIS currently underway, build year of twenty thirty-one, so it's coming later than this, so we can't really predict it for this application. However, the Duchess Manor, sorry, the Fuhr Trail EIS has this project as a no-action background project that's happening before twenty thirty-one, so therefore it has to include it, and accumulatively looks at it with the Fuhr Trail and all the other parking lots, all the other intersections along ninety that are going to be pinch points. It's fully looking at that. I can't speak to it here because it's not the application in front of us, but I can tell you that the FEIS for the Fuhr Trail is considering this project plus the full build-out of Fuhr Trail by a twenty thirty-one build year.
When you.
That's all I can tell you.
When you say that they are looking at, they're looking at, they're looking at, are they looking at it with hypothetical mathematical models, or are they doing it like actually, you know, counts, people actually observing the traffic patterns? If you go down there, like everybody says, you go down on a weekend, and people, I, I know the DOT has been trying to like limit the, you know, the old hoopy-loo parking all over the place and people coming up and down, but I always, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to disparage anything, but I, I drive all the time, and these traffic studies, for some reason, don't always hold water with me.
I don't take offense because I'm a planner and not a traffic engineer, but, so.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, I, sometimes I, it's like the smelling hair test, you know what I mean? Like, you, you, you drive and you see things, and then with, like you said, with the more capacity of people doing stuff, you also got to take into effect that somebody gets out of a car, somebody comes by and slams his door off his car, and now we have an accident scene. And then somebody's trying to go into the trail there, somebody's in a hurry and rams into somebody. I mean, I'm just looking at it as a whole, not just theoretical things of parking spaces and how the buses are going to go in, and it's just real-life things. I understand why people are concerned that live around there and people who go down there and see it, and Fred makes a good point about, you know, certain hikers go up into the trails, and who's going to be walking, I.
Yeah, I think we're getting off track because we're, again, this is, the application is not.
Can you just, as a snapshot, explain the, that the larger review is being done by Parks? Parks?
They're the lead agency for a environmental impact statement, which is currently, uh, in the FEIS stage. There was a public hearing on the draft EIS, which I think there was twenty-seven hundred comments, some to that effect, twenty-three hundred, which are being.
The town of Fishkill did submit a letter of comment on the DG EIS, so.
Right, so that's being developed now. The FEIS responds to all the draft EIS comments, as you know, and provides any additional analysis that they, that was deemed necessary between the draft and final, and that's currently underway. I can't comment on when that's going to be public, but that's all being done now. Um, as far as your question about the traffic study, I mean, the scope of the traffic study for the EIS was accepted by Parks as the lead agency. It follows pretty much the standard methodology that SEACER requires, that DOT requires, the existing, the no-action, the with-action, how they interplay, um, what the impacts are and what the mitigation's necessary.
I have a question for you. Who do you estimate parking at this location? What type of person do you picture? Because just going in and looking at that old house is not going to bring any people, all right? So who do you project coming through that location and parking?
So it would be a mix. We do think there will be some people who are curious about the manor and want to see that.
Well, okay.
Or edu, like if we have education interpretive displays to check that out, um, or to hang out on the lawn, you know, we might have a food truck there, so you could go and have lunch and just look out at the river. Um, staff would be parking there, and then people who want to go for a hike. So if there's no parking in the Breakneck area, you could park here and then take a shuttle down to the trails.
What's going to prevent somebody from just parking onto Route ninety?
No parking signs and enforcement.
No parking.
Yeah. And to your question, to your, to your comment about the doors, I know that's a problem now, and the way it's parked down at ninety and at Breakneck, the way the configuration it will be, it's going to be a totally separate parking lane with enough clearance for you to open your door safely and not interrupt the travel lane the way it is right now.
And just correct me if I'm wrong, but the larger environmental review is kind of a generic review with probably some site-specific points, and this particular facility is a site-specific review. It's part of the larger project, but the planning board is reviewing this item.
Correct.
So the big picture is important, but this is pretty important, too. And I, and I do believe people will go there and just hang out that don't hike. I think people that don't hike will want to go look at the river and.
Well, we, we had, we had the discussion of segmentation back in February, but we agreed that we were going to look at just this, but, but from the traffic point of view, you just cannot discount all the rest of the traffic on ninety.
Yeah. No, agreed, but that's why it's covered in, for the larger review.
That's right.
Yeah.
So how, how big of an area over here is where people can take a blanket or table, there're going to be outdoor tables or anything else to have for people to eat?
City assessment there.
Because you're saying somebody just going to sit there and enjoy, they're going to have to have a place to enjoy.
Right, so this is the area, this lighter green area is the vent lawn, so you could sit anywhere there. Um, we have parking for food trucks over here, so you could go grab some lunch and then just sit out and eat that. We did, I didn't really highlight it before, but this is a little bit of terrace seating, so you could sit there and have, I think that's, no, you can see it a little bit here where you're, yeah, you can sit on some, just stone with grass under your feet, kind of seating that you could sit there and just enjoy the view of the river.
Uh, let's get over to MJ Engineering's review letter, and then we can come back to the board if there's any other comments. So Denise, I'll, I'll turn it over to you for the review letter.
Thank you. So we submitted a memo on August eleventh, and the majority of the comments were with respect to the plans as well as the stormwater pollution prevention plan. There was one comment on the environmental, the secret action, the narrative. It was suggested that it expand to include snow removal, both from a standpoint of chemical use as well as, um, with the grass and the, um, uh, the non-paved areas, how you'll remove snow for parking, because I think only forty percent of your parking is in the paved area, the remainder will be in those, in those non-paved areas, and how snow removal will be handled, if it's, if that area would be utilized during that time of the year. Um, and then with respect to the plans, uh, I'll just kind of broad brush over, in terms of the general site plan, uh, there doesn't appear to be any variance requested, required. However, we'd like that confirmed by the town zoning officials. Um, it's suggested that the applicant also, uh, provide a narrative to address the requirements outlined in the Town Code, Chapter one fifty, Section one oh six, which, uh, is with respect to special, the special use permit that's being applied for. There's a narrative, uh, required in terms of addressing questions, and this will help, uh, the board review and, um, address public comments more effectively. Um, with respect to, uh, the, I'm sorry, oh, and finally, also on the plan sheet, it was suggested to, well, it's required to show the property owners on the plan sheet that, uh, shows the lot lines in terms of name, text, identification number. Uh, right now, it's just showing the properties without that information. Um, uh, the civil, the layout plan, uh, we would like to see you to identify, uh, the accessibility for the ADA spots to the building, to call it out, uh, the accessible curbs, ramps, um, as well, um, there, it's, you haven't shown any of the garbage containers in terms of like the dumpsters, where those would be, would be placed, and how any shielding or visual would be added around them. Uh, and just pointing out that, that entrance to ninety would require a highway work permit from the New York DOT. Uh, in terms of drainage, the drainage plans, uh, specifically Sheet C one twenty-one to add spot elevation, so we can check that the site is adequately draining, uh, and as well, the utility plan is going to require approval from the Duchess County, um, DOH, Department of Health, uh, as well as, um, the, the two onsite wells, uh, just pointing out that, uh, that will, I, I think there's, the two onsite wells are staying, they're not being abandoned.
Okay.
So the, the, um, onsite disposal system would require the, the, um, DOH's approval. In terms of erosion control, uh, it's, you, you're going to have to add a note regarding construction sequencing, um, as well, that note should identify the town, and as a regulated land use, they need to participate in the construction conferences, uh, for, um, pre-construction conferences. Uh, in terms of the grading plan, I already mentioned to provide the spot elevation, so we can, I, we can verify the ADA accessibility. Uh, as well, there's a requirement to show the average grade plane of the building. Um, so in terms of that, if the grade plane exceeds thirty feet in height, uh, the, there's a minimum obstructed distance for the aerial apparatuses for the fire department, so we need to see the, um, average grade plane of the buildings shown on the site plans. Um, there was one note with respect to the details, uh, the drainage detail, to provide the soil media, to provide a specification for that drainage swale. Uh, I already mentioned on the access plan, um, to show the ADA parking spec, stalls, and to identify that the accessibility aisle should be on the passenger side for those, uh, as well to indicate the signage for the ADA spaces on those plans. Um, there was one suggestion on the material plan, which is, uh, it's a landscaping sheet, L one hundred. Uh, the cobblestone drop-off area, just consider putting a concrete base down. Over time, the weight of buses and food trucks are going to eventually create an uneven surface on that cobblestone if it's just an aggregate base, and that's going to be an accessibility issue. On the furniture plan, uh, there's, there's a note of entry identification sign, and this appears to be in the DOT's right-of-way. Uh, it's, it's hard to tell, but you're going to have to move that out of the right-of-way, and the DOT is going to be interested in reviewing that as well in terms of the lighting. That, I think that sign is lit. Um, for the planting plan, which is also on the landscaping plans, um, there was a question regarding how that propane tank will be filled, considering there's a lot of planting around it. Um, it, the, the memo lists all the planting and is concerned that might pose a safety concern for accessibility to that propane tank. Um, and then in terms of the planting as well, it was, it was pointed out that plantings are very dense, and there's a concern that the planting scheme could actually prevent uh, visibility and access, blocking access of incoming traffic and vehicles. Um, with respect to just understanding how the species of trees will fill out and not obstruct the view as people are moving through in and out of the property as well as parking areas. Um, and finally, uh, the applicant should provide a narrative to discuss. And finally, the applicant should provide a narrative to discuss how the landscaping maintenance and work would allow and continue to function for the drainage ways and the swales. And this should be added to Appendix G of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which addresses the continuance maintenance for the stormwater system. And then, and with respect to the lighting, I think Liz already brought this out, there's really not enough information on the plans to address, to assess the lighting, and the resubmission should provide the minimum and maximum foot handle values from the, the surface level, so we can do a review of how that's going to impact lighting on the site. There was several comments regarding the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. In general, the plan addresses the New York State's requirements. It's addressing erosion and sediment control. It does address the pre and post-discharge rates. There are just, I don't think I need to read them, but there's just some general comments to, I think the, if you read through it, to clean up, some of the appendices are cited incorrectly, specifically in Section 7, the stormwater management practices. It's not clear which ones are incorporated into the modeling. The maintenance inspection schedule that must be followed needs to be clarified in Appendix H. As well, that plan, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, needs to have the soil test pits and the infiltration test results added as an appendancy, probably Appendix D. Those are listed on your site plan, but they're not part of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And then finally, to clarify ownership of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention structures and any maintenance agreements or easements required for access for the town of Fishkill that might be required. Just to acknowledge whether or not a maintenance agreement is going to be required. Yeah, and there, I mean, this is a technical comment regarding how the water quality volumes, how the application of green infrastructure technology and stormwater management plans were, were specifically to note those in the water quality volume calculations. And that, that I think is, is a summary of everything. Is it, the memo's more clearly, I went through things quickly, but that, it's more clearly pointed out and described in the memo that Dennis submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Yeah, I guess I was, yeah, I was going to open up for board members to ask any questions.
You guys first came here. I, I, at that time, I had an RV. I don't want to have an RV, but you have no place for RVs. This is supposed to be a visitor's center for people who are traveling, all right? You want to make it historical, historical. If you go to Roosevelt, Vanderbilt, Van Mountain, anyplace else, they have some dedicated parking for RVs, and you have none here. And you said you were going to look into it, but I don't know what you guys did about it.
Because we keep changing this darn parking lot, but the first place we were eyeing for that was down here at the base here. But now it might make more sense to either, I think there's some space along the side here, or maybe that's where some, the gravel lot.
You ought to have some dedicated, because you don't want the big RVs taking up four of your lots, you know, four of your spots and blocking everything else. So.
Or make it abundantly clear that RVs are not, not able to access the site.
Well, it's real hot for visitors who are coming from across the country, are going to Vanderbilt, Van Mountain, they want to stop here. You don't want them stopping on 9D.
Okay.
All right. So at this point, Dominic, I wanted to ask your thoughts. I know Liz had made a suggestion earlier in her memo about a draft EAF Part II. I have my own thoughts on that, but I wanted to ask you about that and as well as any actions this board should or could consider this evening.
Yeah, I mean, that is one of the actions that the board could consider. There's a couple other alternatives, you know, similar to what the process the board did with century aggregates, is that you actually had your public hearing. In that way, you could have comments from the public, although certainly we've been receiving comments from the public, you know, all along through this process, but, you know, you may be able to identify any additional concerns or the substance and significance of concerns, you know, as a result of having public hearing. That's another option. And another option would be for the applicant, and this will be up to them, as to whether or not they want to continue to refine the plans in light of the comments that they've been receiving to date. So I think we should hear from the applicant as to what they would like to do as far as next step. Obviously, it's not binding on the board. The board, you know, makes decisions regarding the process that it makes, but, you know, they may have an opinion as to how they would like to proceed as well.
Your thoughts on that?
Yes. So what, what we were going to propose is to ask the board to schedule a public hearing for next month. In the meantime, we will address, as Amy said, the landscape buffer to the south and, and address other comments from the consultants. But I think we would suggest having the public hearing before preparing the EAF Part II, just because it may impact how, how the form is completed.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the board for their thoughts, but I'll, I'll jump in first. Honestly, this start and stop review of this project has been very not helpful to this board in terms of a beneficial review process. I feel like tonight is basically the first time we're looking at this project. There have been significant changes to the layout of this site. Yes, it's the same project and the same intent, but I think there's been quite a bit of change. The last time we saw this application was back in February, and we were on a several-month-long sidetrack of discussing just the traffic impacts. And now this project has changed, and the process has been really disjointed, in my opinion. And I think there's been quite a few comments raised tonight from our consultants, items toward the certificate of appropriateness, some issues regarding buffering, parking layouts, really a lot of comments that have been raised even in the engineers' review letter that I think need to be revised and considered by this board before we're comfortable having a public hearing. But that's just one man's opinion. I'd like to ask the board for their thoughts.
I agree with you, Anthony. I think our engineer's brought up a lot of different questions that should be addressed before we move forward to a public hearing. I am looking forward to an EAF, if not yet, but I think that's going to help us a lot, too. I think that'll give the board a lot more direction as to, you know, how to look at this project, but I, I think we need to address some of the things that have been addressed today by our consultants before we move forward.
And I would also consider suggesting to board members to visit the site if they haven't already before next month's meeting. I think that's going to go a long way, too, in terms of making informed decisions. But Felix, I appreciate your opinion. I'd like to know where else the board stands in terms of whether or not we're ready to schedule a public hearing at this point, so please.
I have no problem putting it off at this point. I mean, I'm trying to remember what happened in February. I got enough problems remembering what I had for dinner.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're right. In fact, it was the visit to the site and parking and the, in that little, you couldn't drive all the way in, and I had to turn around, but then going north on Route, or turning north on 9D is what made me so conscious about the traffic on Route 9, and that was then exacerbated by trips to Coles Springs. I think, and some of the comments that we're getting, the public comments, the written comments, allude to some of those same things, which I think need to be addressed.
Mr. Chairman, I was also thinking that, I don't know if we want to do it this month or next, but I think a site visit would be very helpful, because like you said, I mean, you got to, I know it's closed off now, but, because, you know, sometimes when you look at it, it's kind of hard to, you know, on paper, but when you're on the site, it might be a little bit easier for us to get a feel of what.
We'd be happy to have you come out and you'll open the gate so you can fall all the way in and give you a tour. And would you come together?
Yeah, I would.
How many fear to open the gate?
I think, I think scheduling a site visit.
It's easier if you guys don't make it a quorum, but that's up to you, because then I have to publish it as a, Dominic will tell you.
That's right. It would be better if you go in threes.
It's better if you go in threes, and we don't make it a public.
Maybe it'd be better to get some times where we would be able to access the site.
Sure.
And I would also recommend that, you know, you can obviously observe, you know, you can ask questions, you know, during this time, but you shouldn't deliberate amongst yourselves regarding aspects of the application.
Oh, sure.
If we drove into the building that you're occupying now in the right.
You can go up now.
We can get in there, and then go in there and ask them, now who's in there now? You? Yes?
I'm just thinking that may be easier if there are certain days of the week where somebody's there where we can.
Yeah, we're usually there Tuesday, Thursday, so.
And what are the hours?
Normal business hours.
I'm not normal. What are normal business hours?
Nine to five.
Nine to five. Me neither.
You said Tuesday and Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that may be easier than trying to schedule a, a visit, so. But I would encourage, you know, board members, even if they can't access the property, to drive through the area, drive both directions through the area.
Or drive.
I'm sure everybody has. We've all been through there, so.
Yeah, this, this drive is the existing driveway that connects through, so you'd be able to come in the driveway that's not shown here to 14 and then take the turn.
Even if the gate is not open, can we just leave the car and walk around a little?
Um, sure, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Then we can visit anytime here.
But I do want to, I didn't, I don't think I got any comments from the other side about the public hearing. Are you guys on the same page in terms of having the applicant provide a resubmital, considering that at the next, or whenever the submittals are? So that is the board's, that is the board's thought.
We'd like to see you more often.
I won't disappear for a few minutes.
Yeah, I think, I think at this point, we'd like to see a submission that addresses quite a bit of these comments. I think this is really the first defined submittal we got. I know we had a previous submittal that had, you know, that October letter, there really wasn't defined plan set. This is really the first real, fully defined plan set as well, so I think having the applicant an opportunity to address a lot of the comments that have been raised would make sense, and then we can consider there whether we're ready for a public hearing, because I think maybe some of the issues will come to light through a, a resubmittal.
Resubmittal, sure, no problem.
Anthony, I kind of leaned over to Denise before to kind of chime in and say, is it, you know, given a lot of the engineering comments, maybe too soon to do a draft full EAF Part II? Wait for the next submittal?
I would agree on that as well. I think there was quite a few comments raised that may address some of those items, so I think, yes, I would agree on that as well. But I don't think, yeah, no further action, I guess, from this board tonight, so we'll look forward to your next submittal.
Sure, and if anyone does want to ask any questions when you're there, if it's a Tuesday or Thursday, you can just knock and I'll, I'll be upstairs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy evening. So John may be finished with his book.
His book, I think.
I, I would say if anybody has to go, I would say go for it. I think we're kind of at a little after ten, so while John finds his way back in here, I'll read the next item on the agenda. Fishkill Self-Storage, 1292 Route 9D, Special Use Permit and Site Development Plan. Board to review the revised draft preliminary final environmental impact statement. Revised draft PFEIS, last revised on August 1st, 2025, prepared by CPL. Town Planner for the Board's review and possible consideration of acceptance of the final environmental impact statement FEIS as complete for circulation in filing pursuant to secret regulations.
You done with your book?
No, I didn't finish it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, so I think what we're going to start with is asking Liz to review the materials that you sent to us.
Okay.
So you have a short memo and a longer document, so why don't you tell us about it?
So, yeah, it is a very short memo.
Which again, I praise you for.
You what?
The shortness of the memo, I praise you for that.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Anyway, basically, the punchline is, it's really right on the bottom of Page 1, Item Number 2. Ultimately, the idea here is taking comments from the public and taking comments from the board from the last meeting that we had, and making revisions and preparing a re-revised preliminary final environmental impact statement that hopefully more clearly aligns with the way you're looking at this. So I did prepare that. And so ultimately, tonight is an opportunity to discuss what, if any other changes or issues or tweaks need to be made to that re-revised preliminary final environmental impact statement. And then obviously, if, if the board feels that it is in sufficient shape, there is the possibility of accepting the version that you have before you. So that's the memo. I don't know that there's a whole lot else to say.
Can you give us kind of a quick run-through of?
Yes.
Some of what went into the revised FEIS?
So I'm going to skip the cover sheet in Chapter 1, because it really, the cover sheet was only updated to add the latest step. And the prior preliminary final environmental impact statement had many of the comments that are in this one. And they had already, the comments had already been distributed through the document last time you saw them. And there are some new aspects. I'm just going to touch on a few things. I'm going to skip comment response number one and two. I, I hope that you've taken a look at on Page 2-11, Planning Board Chairman Comment About Comment Response 10. I thought that was a very succinct message. And I didn't put it in the numbering because it is a separate kind of comment. And then basically going back over to Page 2-12, it starts to get into the process that is a zoning process. So you're looking at it in a preliminary final environmental impact statement, but ultimately, the reason we're doing any of this, it is a zoning process with four prongs. And so we start to get into talking about those. It's language that you've seen before, but it kind of walks you back through what is the restricted business district and what's allowed thereunder, and how the R15 residential uses are also folded in. And then going over to Page 2-13, it talks again about all the different uses that are allowed. all the different uses that are allowed, um, and it talks about the Building Inspector's quote about that, um, about what is substantially similar or what isn't. Um, hang on a second here. Um, a lot of it refers back to the legislative intent of the RB zoning district and what that means. And then I'm gonna skip over to bottom of page two fifteen to top of page two sixteen. Um, it walks you back through part of the zoning, the central zoning piece, which is one fifty dash nineteen B, one A through D. And it talks about A through B, and, hang on a second here, if you walk through the purposes of, um, the RB district, I'm sorry, the purpose of the zoning is featured on page two dash sixteen. So you're basically getting a walk through the, the core logic of your zoning and why does it all matter? Um, and it's because this, this is a question about, well, this thing wasn't allowed in this zoning district, why should it be allowed? And if it's to be allowed, does it really match up with all the purposes of the zoning and the purpose of, of the zoning district, et cetera? Um, let's see. Let me skip a couple of comments here. I'm gonna skip some of the traffic ones. Um, comment number nine, um, in that, that's on page two dash twenty-two, and I try to highlight there that the response expresses a misunderstanding about zoning patterns related to the three most intensive residential use districts, which are PSC, uh, General Business, and Planned Industry. Um, because there are a lot of times when, um, it's the FEIS and the DEIS insist that this use fits in, it's less intensive, et cetera. Um, so I'm trying to walk you through in a couple places the logic of the zoning districts, and then one of the points that was raised sort of against the logic of the zoning districts had to do with the fact that in the more intensive zoning districts, residential uses are allowed, and of course, the logic there is, in pretty much any zoning district in your town, you are allowed to have residential uses, certain types of residential uses, because people live near where they work or live near the business they own, et cetera, et cetera. And so I touch on that on page two dash twenty-two. Um, let's see. On page two dash twenty-five, I'm talking about the character of the proposal, and that highlights, um, the fact that it would affect community character, but also, um, that also really highlights that one of the issues with the character of the use is that it really involves very little social interaction with the surrounding community. In that area, I try in many places to illustrate, and I did take a walk recently in that area just to make sure, am I saying the right thing here? It i-it is an area where people are walking through. I mean, I, I walked there for half an hour and I saw, I don't know, basically the equivalent of sixteen people an hour just walking in the area. And I did speak briefly to a couple of them and, and just said, you know, oh, where did, they said, oh, we're headed back. Oh, where did you start from? We started in Newburgh. They crossed the bridge, they used that, you know, green trail between the two cities, went down to the beacon waterfront and were walking back, and that was part of their exercise program. So there are a lot of places in here where I'm, I'm trying to tell you that it isn't just a thought, there's actual, you know, facts and information behind the thought. And you might wanna just go to that frontage area and just observe it a little bit and see what you see on, um, on like an evening, on a weekday, when people are home from work, maybe they're going for their walk, or on the weekends, and just see what is really happening there. Um, and I think that you'll start to see what I've observed. Um, let's just see if there's any other big points, because I don't wanna ramble on here. And where I'm characterizing the area pretty intensively, bottom of page two dash thirty-one through, um, two dash thirty-four, I really urge you to read that, because in there, I'm trying to pull together the character of the area and all, and other documents, such as Comprehensive Plan Update, that also acknowledge that. It's not an idea that's pulled out of air, it's an idea that's a theme in, and I think I even mentioned Comprehensive Plan of two thousand nine and the Comprehensive Plan Update, so it's long been a theme in the area. Um, I don't know, Jonathan, is there any point you think I didn't hit, or?
I don't know, you're doing fine.
Okay. And then Jonathan has another comment that was inserted at page two dash forty-one. Um, and again, that has to do with, um, issues with the Building Inspector's conclusions. Um, let me skip over to, let's see. There are places in the draft environmental impact statement and other iterations of it where there's a discussion characterizing the area as a high-speed vehicular traffic area. And in fact, right in front of the site, it's thirty miles per hour, there's sidewalks on both sides, and in the pedestrian section that I do, I also highlight the fact that there are crosswalks across the streets coming in, and also, when you get up to the overpass for I eighty-four, there's a crosswalk over there. So there's definitely an intention to accommodate pedestrians. And so there's a little bit more about that on page two dash forty-eight through the top of two dash fifty. And I think what you'll also see is that I've tried to add more specific stuff to each of the prongs of two fifty dash nineteen. Um, so, two fifty dash nineteen, wait a minute here. Uh, sorry, I've lost my place, apologies. Okay, that, that whole section is going on, um, part of it is two dash fifty, talks about Section B, um, two fifty dash nineteen B, and it tries to cover all the prongs of that. There are some discussions in there about, um, the Planning Board does not have the authority to suggest a specific use to a private landowner, and that theme comes up a lot, but as a matter of necessity, the board has to examine, um, what are the uses that are allowed in RB and by association R fifteen? And that was why the comparative use table came to be in the first place. One thing I will say about the comparative use table, it presents a number of scenarios that might be feasible, but some of them could be scaled back and fit better in that area. So the whole point of that is there are a lot of options for development of other uses that are actually allowed in the zoning districts. And there's a lot in, um, the PFEIS that explains, it walks you through the logic of why are these first three districts here, and why are they followed by the more intensive districts? So, I think that kinda covers the big bases. Does anybody have questions about anything that's been written in the PFEIS that doesn't make sense, or doesn't jibe, or?
So far, I think it's beginning to make a lot more sense than it has in the past. It's, uh, it's a lot of stuff in there, and it's pretty complicated, but I think you've finally gotten it
I know it's hard to read.
Put together in a, in a way that.
I realize it's kinda hard to read, but it is kinda technical, and the decision you're making is a technical one, so.
And part of that is, or a large part of it, is driven by the fact that, you know, while initial draft of the FEIS prepared by the applicant, you know, as, as Liz mentioned, like the, it, it becomes the board's document, and so it becomes the board's statement, you know, and basis for your conclusions regarding the project. And in this case, the initial draft was prepared by the applicant, but based on their view and opinions regarding the project, which do not seem to align with the board's opinions and, and potential conclusions regarding the project. So as a result, the applicant took it as far as they could, and then they relinquished the document. They acknowledged that the board's consultants would take over the drafting, so that the process could be finalized, and and as a result, that's, you know, we, we kind of have this hybrid document that was initially prepared by them, but now has to be finalized by the board and the board's consultants, which is an unusual, an atypical practice. I mean, in the sense that, I mean, all FEIS has become the document of the, and statement of the board, but in many projects that I've worked on, you know, there, there's an alignment between the project sponsor as, and the lead agency, but in this case, there is not.
And just in terms of the four prongs of two fifty dash nineteen B, um, if, if you wanna dog ear your pages, two dash, page two dash fifty-six is the beginning of the discussion of zoning code section one fifty dash nineteen B, one A, so that's page two dash fifty-six. And the beginning of zoning code section one fifty dash nineteen B, one B, it begins on page two dash sixty-eight, and that has to do with the proposed use meeting the stated purpose and legislative, legislative intent of the district. And then zoning code section one fifty dash nineteen B, one C, um, that has to do with the proposed use shall not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, excuse me, of the residents, begins on page two dash seventy. And if you go over to page two dash seventy-three, that's where there's a CPL PFEIS comment. So, and then, same thing, two dash seventy-four is the beginning of zoning code section two fif, one fifty dash nineteen B, one D. That one has to do with, it's a little more complicated, the proposed use shall share characteristics in common with and not be of greater intensity, density, or generate more environmental impact, including but not limited to having no greater adverse effect upon traffic, noise, air quality, parking, or any other reasonably relevant attribute than those listed in the zoning district in which it is to be located. And, so that's on page two dash seventy-four, and if you just flip to two dash seventy-six, you'll see CPL PFEIS Comment Twenty-Six that sort of takes that one on. So, the points are covered, and then general issues are covered. And I guess it's fair to say if anybody has questions, I think it's fair if you want, if you need to, to email me a question. And the suggestion would be, if it, well, I don't know if you can do this, I would say email to all, but you can't, because then that's a meeting. So you can't do that. But you could, I think, is it all right if, um, Planning Board members email me directly if they have a question, or?
I mean, they can, I mean, it's all, you know, part of the record, you know, and...
Well, what I'm hoping we can do tonight is, um, get any additional suggestions from the board as to, you know, what, what, if anything, needs to be further revised in this document, but...
Yeah, I, I agree. I think unless the board has like any particular revisions that you want to see, I think that this has been taken about as far as it can go, and I would strongly recommend that you adopt the FEIS tonight, unless you have something in particular that you would like to see changed.
Yeah, so I've, I've taken a pretty thorough look at it by now, and definitely appreciate all the work you put into, um, adding all, all this into the record and good information that the board will need to be making when we ultimately put together our findings statement. So that, that would be the next step, of course, once we adopt the FEIS document. So, I'm happy with it. I'll ask other board members, what do you think? Are there other things you can think of, or are we going to be ready to consider?
I guess a general question for, probably more for Dominic. So the, the current FEIS, you know, for some of the responses, you know, the applicant says they respectfully disagree, and that's still here in the document, and then we have our updated, the updated response.
Yeah.
Since this is our document, the applicant's disagreement with the statement, does that belong in this? It's our document.
It is your document, and so one option would be to delete all of the applicant's statements, uh, in, you know, in, in response. It, it would be a, a bit of a significant rewriting, uh, at that point. But I think what the, what it does is create the record of how the applicant, uh, you know, perceived, uh...
Well, that's why I'm asking, is it appropriate that that remain in here, or since it's our document, well, clearly, we disagree with their assessment. Since it's our document, would that response, can that response be taken out in our response?
I think it's important for the record to leave it in.
Leave it in.
I agree, I think the conversation is important. That's my opinion.
Just asking, not suggesting one way or the other, right?
It's a great question.
It is our document, and usually, like you said, it's not usually...
And as I said, it's atypical, right?
Well, that's what I meant, yeah.
Usually, like, you have an alignment, you know, between what an applicant's proposing and what the board concludes ultimately, but here, you do not. And as a result, the FEIS will show, you know, that those points where there isn't alignment.
And, and there was a version where the comments that were made by CPL were taken out. So we've kind of been back and forth a little bit, but I think having the progression of the...
No, I think, I think it makes sense. I'm just
I know, it's a great question.
Because it's our document, and this is atypical, does that disagreement belong in here? I, that's, you know, but I don't have any issue with it.
I mean, and this is a piece of zoning I've never seen before, so it's cool.
Since comments are, we've added our thoughts after the fact, so I guess that's we've made our point known, so.
Well, we actually added them before the fact, but then they were not included, and then we put them back in, basically.
Correct.
That's what happened.
That makes, yes.
And they got expanded a little bit.
Yeah, very, yeah, very much so.
Appreciate the response.
I would call it enhanced, yes.
I appreciate the question.
Does everybody have, have clarity? I mean, I, I tried to get the response of the document as I could, but I think you did a great job, as usual. But I'm, maybe I've been sitting in the executive chair for long, but what I was looking for is clarity. Like, you know, what, what are the salient elements in these almost a hundred pages?
If I may, that's actually, that's actually gonna come in the next step, because the next step would be the secret findings statement, which is the summary of, of the entire project. project, and will set you up for whatever decision that the board decides to make in connection with the project. And that actually has to be done for the September meeting if you adopt this FEIS tonight. SEACR requires that it be done within 30 days of circulation of the FEIS, so assuming that if you do adopt the FEIS as presented tonight, or with any adjustments that you want to make, that it would be circulated, you know, within the coming days, and then at your September meeting, you would be considering a finding statement.
Thank you. Thank you. That's an optional. It's just a complexity right now, but it's very, very salient of points.
Presumably, the finding statement, which as Dominic said, is basically the next and final step of the SEACR process, will be shorter, more concise, more to the point of what the board's position on this is going to be. It'll be, it'll be interesting, because it, there's a lot in the FEIS document that will have to be kind of rewoven and...
Condensed.
Condensed and recreated into a new document. Here, there's, this might help a little bit, it's sort of jumping ahead a little, but... So, I mean, I think we still, any further discussion that the board might have on this would be helpful, but the bottom line is basically the board really needs to determine, and I think, whether the revised PFIS that we reviewed, thanks to Liz, should be accepted as complete, or whether further revisions should be incorporated. If the FEIS is accepted as complete, then the lead agency is responsible for preparing, filing, and publishing a notice of completion of the FEIS and filing copies of the FEIS in accordance with section 617.12 of NYCRR, part 617, that's the SEACR regulations. So, I have laid out a motion that maybe I should read and let you think about it, hold it over, and see where we go with it.
Go for it.
And then, you know, if there is further discussion, we can do that after the motion has been made. So, this would be a motion for the Planning Board as lead agency to accept the final environmental impact statement, FEIS revised August 1, 2025, as complete, which includes all of the revised chapters, appendices, tables, figures, maps, public comments received on the DEIS, public hearing record, and responses to substantive comments on the DEIS, and to authorize the board's consultants and staff, including the Planning Board attorney, town planner, and Planning Board secretary, to prepare, file, and publish a notice of completion of the FEIS, and file copies of the FEIS in accordance with section 617.12 of the SEACR regulations. So, that would be the basic motion, and then if we do that, and if we get through that, there'll be more to follow that I'll get into later. So, what do you think?
Let's get to step one.
That motion made sense to me. I don't have any suggested revisions to that, so I'll make the, I'll move it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so Anthony moves it, and Felix seconds it. So, discussion, and here's where there's an opportunity, if you want to ask questions, more questions, or comment, or...
So, that, this means this will be treated as the final version, and no more changes will be done?
Right. That's assuming that that's where the board wants to go. But again, as we've been saying, the next real important step can't be done until the FEIS is accepted, and that's, once the FEIS is accepted as complete, then we can move on to our finding statement, and that's where the real key things are going to be decided. If you want, I can move ahead, so let's pause there. I'll move ahead to what that next step would look like. So, let's pretend we've already done it. So, now that the final EIS has been accepted as complete, the final step in the SEACR process will be for the Planning Board as lead agency to prepare a written finding statement. The lead agency's filing of a written finding statement and decision on whether or not to approve the proposed action must be made within 30 calendar days after the filing of the final EIS. Findings and a decision to approve or deny the proposed action may be made simultaneously, that's in section 617.11 of the SEACR regs. Findings must include but not be limited to certain elements listed in section 617.11, including consideration of relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions in the FEIS, weighing and balancing relevant environmental impacts with social, economic, and other considerations, and providing a rationale for the agency's decision. So, then, going on from there, assuming we accept the final EIS, there will be a whole another discussion and, and motion regarding the preparation of the finding statement. So, it's a sequence of events that one will lead to the other. Does that make sense? But we can't get to step two, the final step, until we do step one. So, we do have a move, motion, and a second, and so we need to hear if there are any more questions, or...
If we don't do it, what happens?
Well, yeah.
I mean, that's what you're basically saying.
Yeah, you have to do it.
You have to.
Yeah, you know, and, and so, you know, the FEIS, you know, as part of SEACR, indicates that it is supposed to be completed within 60 days of the public hearing, and public hearing was quite some time ago. That time is adjusted, of course, because, you know, the applicant itself takes the initial stab at preparing the document, and then obviously, there's a very clear record of the back and forth that has happened regarding not seeing aspects of this project in the same way that the applicant sees them or perceives them. And then the applicant clearly turned the document over to the board, and you've now had several months of, of having this document revised, you know, for your review. I strongly recommend that you adopt it tonight unless you have, once again, something particular in this document that you think needs to be changed.
Okay. On the most, basically, you're saying if not today, you'll have to adopt it anyway next, next month.
If not today, when, is my question.
Right.
Because, I mean, this could keep going on forever and ever and ever, and that's really not the point.
Right. And you run the risk of, you know, having that be part of a legal challenge against the board for, you know, an undue delay in your obligations.
What is happening here about your argument not to approve?
No, I'm just hearing questions about why we should do it now, and that's, these are the answers. So, we do have a motion, and a second. Yeah? Should we vote?
Yes, let's please vote.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes, so we have now accepted the final environmental impact statement as complete as presented and discussed tonight. So, I'll pick up where I gave you a preview before, so, so now that the final EIS has been accepted as complete, this is reality now, not a projection into the future, the final step in the SEACR process will be for the Planning Board as lead agency to prepare a written finding statement. So, I won't reread the whole thing there, but I think the main point I want to make is that based on the record of the project review, the draft EIS, and now the final EIS, that's been accepted by the board as complete, my own observation is that the record points toward denial of the proposed action. That's where I think we've all been waiting to hear somebody actually say that and to move forward with what we're going to be doing, but that's, that's basically what I see now with the FEIS revised, with, I think, all the appropriate wording that Liz has added back into it, and this is where I think the record shows that the board should go.
I would agree.
What do others think? I mean, what I've done is I've drafted a motion based on that premise, and we could, I'll read the motion and see what people...
Don't we need the final statement first?
We have it now.
But the clarity that I was alluding to earlier, this next step...
Well, the next step is what we will do now, if you listen to the motion.
Right, this is a motion to authorize the drafting of the summary, which was called the finding statement.
So, this would be a motion to authorize the board's consultants, including the Planning Board attorney and town planner working cooperatively, to prepare a draft finding statement, and, and this is an aside, since SEACR says we can do, we can consider the finding statement and the approval or denial of the action simultaneously, basically, at the same meeting, once we adopt the finding statement. So, let me go back. So, the Planning Board attorney and town planner working cooperatively to prepare a draft finding statement and a draft resolution of denial for the board's consideration at the September 11, 2025 meeting, focusing on the full record, but in particular, on whether the proposed self-storage facility proposed by 1292 Realty LLC meets the criteria in section 150-19B. That's really where we've been going with this whole thing, of the Town Official Code regarding substantial similarity as to whether the board should approve or deny approval of the proposed self-storage use as being permitted in the RB restricted business zoning district. So, that's the motion. So, again, we could see if we have a motion and a second, and then have some more discussion on it. So, I'll move second. Anthony moves it, and Felix seconds it. Okay, so, everyone understand where this is going?
Not a little. What do you mean by resolution of denial? Why do you say it?
Well, because it's either approval or denial. So, what the finding statement, what this will do is have a finding statement prepared for the board that will lead to a denial of the proposal.
Can, can I just throw in, I mean, in the past, when I've written other findings after an FEIS, it's a findings to, it's a findings of no significant impact, or a finding of significant impact? Isn't that part of the language?
It's not exactly that, I don't think. Dominic, even?
No, I think that there would be a SEACR finding statement that lays out the record, you know, and identify, you know, relevant areas of environmental concern, and summarize all of those. And that there will be a discussion, although it's really, it has to dovetail really with the resolution, because the resolution will go through in actual findings in connection with a special permit, and that's where, like, these things, you know, could potentially be conflated, but they should not be, because the SEACR finding statement should deal with the environmental impacts associated with the project, and then the decision of the board should be related to whether or not the applicant, in the board's opinion, has made the requisite showing that they are entitled to a special permit for this facility at that location.
Yeah.
So, it's two pieces, you know? But it, as the chairman said, it's either an approval or denial, and...
So, I'm, so on there, I mean, so you, consultants, consultants will be preparing a finding statement of denial?
Well, it's a finding statement under SEACR, and it will lead to a decision to either approve or deny the proposal.
Right. I mean, this process has to come to an end, and so, you know, and so the applicant, you know, has proposed, you know, a project that is not identified within the zone. There is provision in the Town Official Code that says that with, if the applicant meets certain criteria, the board can then grant a special permit, meeting those criteria as well, so there's two sets of criteria to make it even more complicated at 10:46 at night, and so, you know, and they, it appears, you know, that, that the concerns that the board has had throughout this process, you know, from, from the very outset, you know, has raised concerns as to whether or not the applicant could meet those criteria. The FEIS, which you just adopted, you know, has a discussion regarding those criteria, and those criteria not being met, and so it provides a foundation for a denial, which I think at this point, even the applicant wants, to be quite honest, because at least that, you know, gives them finality in connection with this application.
And correct me if I'm wrong, again, but the findings is related to environmental impacts to some degree?
Of course.
And then the decision is based on, really, we're talking planning and code and zoning.
And the environmental impacts.
And the environmental impacts.
Correct, correct, it's based on all of it, but the finding statement will deal with the, primarily with the environmental impacts, you know, obviously, community character, zoning, there will be a discussion there, you know, but it will, it will be a summary of all of the environmental impacts.
And mainly because if, if the board, I, I asked it because if the board, you know, wants to be able to say, what's this one and what's that one? That's, that was my intention to that question.
Sure. But I would recommend that you authorize preparation of this, in fact, as I said, before, you know, preparation of the finding statement is required, you have to adopt it within 30 days of the action you just took.
Right.
So, it has to be, you know, you know, you run the risk of being arbitrary and capricious if you do not have this on for the September meeting agenda.
So, again, as I, as I read before on my notes, findings and a decision to approve or deny the proposed action may be made simultaneously, i.e., on September 11, one after the other. So, obviously, the finding statement has to set up the proposition that we're going to be denying the project on the basis of the facts and documentation provided in the whole SEACR process, but also based on the whole record of the project review, which includes all stuff related to the zoning, but that's all now in the FEIS, which makes it really the basis for moving that next step into the finding statement. And again, this comes all directly from SEACR, includes certain elements need to be addressed in the finding statement, including consideration of relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions in the FEIS, weighing... of relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions in the FEIS, weighing and balancing relevant environmental impacts with social, economic, and other considerations. That covers a lot. And providing a rationale for the agency's decision. That's key to the whole thing. So, so we've got a motion and a second.
So let's vote.
All right. And no further discussion?
No, let's vote, please.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. So we're not quite done. I wanted to acknowledge that the board has received correspondence from the attorney for 1292 Realty LLC, and the board is going to seek advice of counsel on this matter in closed session. So after the closed session, the board will return to the regular meeting and may take action based on counsel's advice in the closed session. So now that we've done the real work on this, there's this other matter that we're going to discuss in closed session. So I'd like for the Planning Board attorney, the town planner from CPO, and the Planning Board secretary, and of course, board members to stay for the closed session. Denise, you're welcome to stay, but I don't think there's a need for you to, so you're welcome to excuse yourself.
Thank you. I will excuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all of your help tonight. So, well, we're, we're going to make the motion, yep. So this will be a motion to enter a closed session. So we are now clearing the room, but please, Planning Board members, stay in the room. And we'll suspend broadcasting and taping until the board returns to the regular meeting because we may be taking some action after we come back into the regular meeting. So is there a motion to enter closed session?
Second.
Wait, was that Felix?
That's Felix.
Anthony.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. We have returned to the regular meeting. So would someone like to make a motion to refer the correspondence from the 1292 Realty LLC applicant's attorney to the chief fiscal officer of the town for a response to the applicant's request?
So moved.
Second.
Felix moves it.
Fred.
Fred, again. All right, Fred. Any further discussions?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Nope.
Okay.
I make another motion?
Please, no.
Please, no.
Do it, Jerry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone like to second that?
We all second it.
We all second it.
Everybody seconded it.
All right.
My favor. Oh, thank you very much. See you in September.
Yeah. As they say.
Well, that'd be a good news.
All right.
Good night, folks.